It is nine o'clock, line county board of county commissioners for Thursday, June twentieth twenty twenty four. Today's agenda action.
Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration, item may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restriction must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place and manner of comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of county commissioners convenes as other boards. Members of the board of county commissioners also serve as the liquor board, central line vector control district board, Mason Valley mosquito abatement district board, Walker River weed control district board, Willow Creek general improvement district board, and Silver Springs general improvement district board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this are a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty to one thirty for lunch. We do have a long agenda. Roll call today, all commissioners are in chambers. Invocation will be given today by Mitch Forster of the New Hope Bible Fellowship, sir.
Father heaven, we call upon you this morning as the God, the creator, heaven is the earth, the one that has all wisdom and all knowledge and all goodness. We do pray, Lord, to continue your blessing upon this county. We do pray that this county will be your blessing to you. And every person that presents today, we pray, Lord, for their peace and for their clarity, and we pray that you will help them all not to be nervous, and we pray that everything will be done peacefully and importantly. So for your wisdom and your counsel and your guidance, we call upon you. Thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayer. We pray that everything will be done according to our constitution. We pray this in the name of Jesus your son, amen.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hendricks, please, please, please.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, with my nation, I am here.
Thank you. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. We have any public comment this morning? Yep, I have a hand on Zoom, Chloe Chisholm.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the time this morning. My name is Chloe Chisholm. I'm the government relations advisor for NV Energy. We just wanted to come this morning for a brief update on our Walker River substation for the Green Link West project. The final EIS report was released on June fourteenth, which is two weeks earlier than was expected, and so we are expecting construction for the Walker Rivers River substation to start at the end of July. And we have all of our local and county permitting in place for this substation, and I would also like to point out that this is located on NV Energy owned private property, and I say that because that is what allows us to go ahead and start construction on this substation before the record of decision from the BLM is issued in August. So with that being said, we just wanted to come before you this morning since there will likely be an increase in activity related to construction of the substation. So if any of you or your constituents and members of the community have questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm at your disposal. If there's anything you wish to discuss, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Melinda Cash. Go ahead, Melinda. We're not hearing you. Are you having problems if? Well, we don't seem to be able to get her up on this. There you go. If you're very weak, though, bring the volume.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry about that. Forgot to plug in something. Anyhow, yes, in in the waste management contract, there is no provision for bear containers. And unfortunately, up in Mound House now, we're having a pretty bad bear problem where the bear is getting to the trash and hauling it all over. At the time you were negotiating the contract, we did not have a bear problem. However, now we're having a really bad bear problem that's affecting almost all the residents. Waste management has bear proof containers, but they will not provide them to us unless it's in your contract. I don't know what we can do about that. I don't know if there's any kind of provision we can make. But for our community, I'm asking if somebody could please look into that for us.
Thank you for your comment. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five for possible action review and adoption of agenda. County commissioners, anything you want to input on the agenda? Public input? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Agenda stands. Time certain. Time certain at nine AM. For presentation only, presentation from Ed James with the Carson Water Conservancy on the Carson River Watershed Thirty Year Drought and Water Sustainability Plan. Mr. James.
Today I'm updating on this thirty year water plan. This is just an update as we move forward. We are still working with different entities. It's always helpful to understand the background, and I figure this will be a good opportunity to even hear. So as we move forward, there are second steps. So the entities that are involved with this are the CSD, we also have Loomis and Associates. We've hired them to help us gather information on different municipalities in their future growth. And then USGS, USGS has two models that they have developed. One is in the upper Carson Valley, and then the other one is in the. I'm not on, oh, sorry. And. I've been actually a little. It's on. Laser, let's see. Well, we'll talk here. So the idea here is to really use utilize these models that have been developed, but put the best data in there because we are moving forward. Yeah, what the computer? Oh. All around the room here. Thank you. So so Loomis has been gathering this information. We're going to give this information then to the USGS. They're going to plug this data and then run these models. What this is not doing is that we're not here to change anyone's water rights. We're not proposing any changes to the Alpine decree or Nevada water law. Everything that will be incorporating these models follow those terms. And this will not change any water purveyors master plan. This is not to be an alternative to your master plan. This is providing additional information. So when you update your master plan, you'll have additional because a lot of entities do not look at this groundwater surface water interaction, how this may impact up and down the watershed. This will be additional information. So when you update your water master plan, hopefully you will incorporate this. So when you say, oh, okay, we're going to put a new well in, wait a minute. If we put it next to the river here, it may cause a problem with it. We may want to move our well location to somewhere else. So this is kind of an overview as we move forward. So this is hopefully moving the data. We've gathered all the municipal water demands. We're now giving it to the USGS on the USGS will be processing this data for the next couple of months. And then from that, hopefully we'll have results that we can bring back at the end of next year or early the following year. But as we get to it, some of the things that might be helpful for your background understanding is what is currently happening in the watershed, the Carson. And so we have some background that we're looking at. This here was done by the Desert Research Institute, DRI. What they did was they took the data at the east or Gardnerville gauge. And we took this data because there is very little upstream human impacts. So this is really what kind of Mother Nature is bringing down. So what is happening in the upper watershed that's coming into our watershed? And what they did was they took the two data sets. And then they took it and said, okay, how much percentage of that flow in those periods occurred in October, November, December, and comparing the two? And what I want to point out is if you look in March, you'll see that in the later date seventy five to two thousand nine, there's more water coming off now than there was historically. So we're seeing a shift in the runoff patterns in the upper watershed. And if you look at June, it's the opposite. More water was coming off later in June than we were today. So we're seeing the runoff occurring earlier. So what does that mean? Well, for the agriculture community that uses most of the surface water, that means that water is coming off earlier, but they may end up in later in the summer having to pump more wells if they have wells. Or if not, they may not be able to irrigate as long. If you're a municipality taking surface water in the future, it can be an impact of how much water you have available because again, that water's not there in late summer. You're going to have to depend more on wells. So this is something we are calculating in our analysis. The other thing, and this was kind of unique, that's hard to conceive, but this was one of the earlier present results of the middle Carson model, which goes from Carson City to La Honton. And what they did is they showed this map or this data from nineteen forty to twenty twenty. This is the Carson City gauge, doesn't say, but you can see this. And what this shows is that we're seeing flows, less flows at the Carson City gauge. Well, when people in Churchill County saw this, the first thing they thought was, oh, my goodness. So all that development upstream that's taking our water, we're seeing less water coming to us. They also did one of the Fort Churchill gauge, and you can see there is a drop, but then the line kind of flattens out. Well, one reason why this is flattening out is because there is less agriculture today in Line County than there was historically. And so we're actually seeing more water coming into it. But again, this was a big concern to the people in Churchill County of is this development upstream taking our water? Well, we asked the USGS, had you done this for the upper watershed? And they had not. So our staff CWSD did this. What's interesting is this is at the Gardnerville gauge, I believe, and you can see a trend. It is going down. So even in the upper watershed, we're seeing less water today than we did historically coming in this. So Mother Nature is being a little stingy now. And this is on the west fork, again, the same thing. So when we get into this, we're already seeing changes in runoff pattern. And this is something we're going to incorporate in our modeling of what happens, not just future, because everyone talks about the future climate changes and impacts and flows, but we're already seeing changes today. And so we want to make sure as we move forward, what does that mean to the overall water picture? There was a study also done by Loomis another years ago for us, and if you look at the bottom row, you'll see here, and this was again from forty to eighteen. And at the Woodford gauge, they almost saw an eight percent reduction in flows coming over this period of time. On the east fork, which is a larger drainage, but and also higher elevation, we saw a four percent. If you combine east and west work together, it's just under five percent reduction we're seeing flows. Now, when you get to the Carson City gauge, it's almost nine percent. So we are seeing impacts in Carson Valley on flows coming through the area. So there is some human impacts, and we'll talk about that later. But then when you get to the Fort Churchill gauge, you'll see it's now just under four percent, which is less than what we're seeing a reduction in the upper watershed. And again, I think a lot of that has to do that agriculture has been reduced significantly in Line County and also in Carson City. And so that's probably putting some more flows that would have historically been diverted and consumed by plants. So I want to talk about our study area. And here you have, I don't know if this shows up here. So we have the upper part where we saw the upper watershed. And then we have the lower watershed. Our focus right now is the upper watershed because that seems to be where the impacts are and the concerns. We are going to be looking at water use demands in Churchill County. But at this point, to move forward with the modeling that we have, we have again the upper model here was in Carson Valley and then the middle Carson. So give you a little closer view of the groundwater basin that we'll be studying. We have Carson Valley, which is the Mind谷 Gardenville area, Eagle Valley, which represents really Carson City. We have the Dayton Valley groundwater basin, which also includes this area. Well, sorry, but in the day area and Stagecoach. And then we have what we call the Churchill Valley groundwater basin, which is actually Silver Springs in that area. To really confuse people, the Churchill groundwater basin is called the Carson Desert. So but every once in a while, people say, well, Churchill Valley should be in Churchill Valley. It's not. But this is it. So this is where our focus are, and these are the major groundwater basins that we'll be modeling with these different models. This is just a list of the water purveyors. We're not modeling all of them at this point. Mark Louisville Water Company is fairly small, doesn't have a huge impact, and just going through. But again, we have talked with all these different entities, and we're working with all these different water purveyors as we look for the future and their growth. Okay, so what I'm going to do is give you a little background on flows and pumping data and the different groundwater basins. Just again, give you a little background of what we're seeing today. So this is Carson Valley. And you can see that the blue line, the dark blue line is pumping that's occurring from twenty seven or two thousand seven to twenty twenty. And this data is taken from the from the state engineer. They do a pumping report. And so we actually took their data. And you can see that it fluctuates. And the biggest user actually out there is irrigation. That's the green line. So when you have wet years, like in two thousand eleven, you can see they didn't pump as much, the water use went down. When you have very dry years, they pump more water, so the uses goes up. The next biggest user is the domestic or missable water use coming through, and you can start seeing a kind of an increase going through. And then we have some domestic wells and then other users going through here. This is a trend line. You can see that the water use is going up in Carson Valley. So we're seeing more water being used today. However, it's one thing I want to point out over here and then the M and I is that there is a regional pipeline that brings water from the town to Minden, pumps it north. It takes care of water use in North Douglas County, Indian Hills GID, and Carson City. Carson City is actually taking about twenty five hundred acre feet a year on this pipeline. So if you actually look at the numbers here, if it wasn't for that demand from Carson City, you would actually see that M and I use would be reduced in Carson Valley. So there's a shift on that. The main reason why this regional pipeline went in wasn't because Carson City was running out of water or North Douglas County. It was because of water quality. When the arsenic levels went from fifty parts of billion to ten, basically every well north of Minden Airport no longer met that standard and all the wells in Indian Hills. So this regional pipeline is taking water that meets those. And actually, so it's a much cheaper to the overall community than the everyone trying to treat their own wells for the arsenic standard. Carson was actually dealing with uranium in some of the wells on the west side, and that's naturally occurring. Again, same thing, if they were to build a uranium's treatment, it would cost them more in this regional pipeline. So when we work cooperatively with all these entities, this was the most cost effective for the overall community. This is kind of their future demands. So again, what we're trying to do is get an estimate. A lot of times people talk about all this growth going on. It's really not a large amount of water when you start looking at over the next thirty years. And this is what we're going to be putting into our computer data. One or again, reason why we're doing this is that when you talk to different entities, everyone has different ideas. You can talk to some people thinking, oh, my goodness, we're going to triple quadruple the amount of water currently being used today. It won't be there. This is more realistic of how much future water demands will be. This is Eagle Valley. So here is what you're seeing Eagle Valley. This goes from two thousand ten to twenty twenty two. The green line is the total demand. The bigger biggest water use is the missable water users. You can see this going through. They do have some other use going through. Here's your domestic going through this area. And you have some other smaller use, very little agricultural use. What's kind of interesting is this growth here, and this is just Eagle Valley. This is not include all the other water resources that they get. You saw a big jump here around twenty twenty one, twenty two. If you remember what happened, the pandemic hit. All some people weren't going to work. They were staying home. They saw a huge jump in their water use in that area. So I guess if people stay home, they tend to use more water. So it's just kind of an interesting point there. However, if we show the twenty three data, it dropped off significantly. Also, twenty three is a very wet year. And so again, everything kind of gets impacted by temperature and also what are people doing? But generally, you can see there's a Trent line here. It's going down in Eagle Valley. And this is kind of their future demands that they see out of Eagle Valley and the growth. Here's their existing use to have here. Now, one of the things that's going to be a lot of Carson Cities demands in the future is their upgrading their quill plant, which will be able to take more water from the Marlet system. So they see a lot of their growth coming out of the quill plant, not groundwater pumping. Dayton Valley, this is your area here. So again, the blue line is your total demands. This goes from two thousand seven to twenty twenty one. We can see you have your larger user is your missful. You do have ag users. So during dry periods, they do tend to pump. Wet periods goes down. So you can see the trend, but the trend line is showing is decrease. And you're seeing basically a lot of water conservation going on. As your water bills go up, people tend to be motivated enough to use as much. And so you're seeing actually a reduction currently in Carson, in the Dayton Valley groundwater basin. And but you have a lot of growth potential. We've looked at those, some of the growth coming into this area. And so we do see a fairly large demand in the future, future growth coming into the Dayton Valley. Dayton area mostly is where that growth would be. Stagecoach is limited by perennial yield and also limitations there. So we don't see a lot of growth. There is going to be some growth out there, but it's not going to be significant to the overall demands. Most of your growth will be in the Dayton Valley area. So just kind of you have eight wells right now that you're using and one induction well. You're utilizing conjunctive use. You really are using your different resources. I'll give you kudos to your staff here. They really are doing a good job. Your current demands are about twenty eight and thirty four acre feet. We're seeing about a point eight percent growth. You currently have enough water rights to meet that future growth. We see your future growth will be about thirty six hundred. So you are going to see growth here. Stagecoach is going to see about one hundred and sixty, one hundred eighty six new connections. Again, they're limited by their water resources availability. But they do have water rights to meet that demand. If they're going to have any significant growth in that area, it's going to have to come from another source outside the area, just the local groundwater basin. Now, they also do have some other water rights that may be able to be transferred for some growth. But again, we don't see a lot of significant growth in the stage coach area at this point. Churchill Valley, which is Silver Springs. The blue line is total. What's interesting in Silver Springs area, the biggest water user is domestic wells. The way the state engineer estimates is that they assume one acre foot for each domestic well. Now, you're entitled to two acre feet, but when they averaged and calculated, they come across with one acre foot. And you can see the municipality has been going up and down a bit based on demands. So it's gone up and down a bit, but again, with water conservation and everything else, it is seen a low reduction. You have a little agriculture there, but also agriculture is slowly reducing over the period of time. Now, the biggest impact out here again is the perennial yield. And the perennial yield is only sixteen hundred out there. When you look at this and say, well, wait a minute, we're way over the perennial yield. Yes. Well, the perennial yield has some issues because it doesn't include recharge from septic's reclaimed water use, return flows from agriculture. So there is probably more water available in this area than you see from just a perennial yield. We're trying to get away from pretty little system yields because that really gives you a better understanding of all the resources you have available to you. The other thing is that a lot of the domestic wells out there are probably not using an acre foot. They're probably using closer to a half acre foot, which is kind of what the municipality is seeing. They're seeing about point four, three acre foot per dwelling unit. So if we actually reduce that to a half an acre foot, you're even below the perennial yield. But again, any kind of future growth that's going to occur out there is going to need a real, a new water supply if you're going to have a big demand in the future. So this is kind of their growth from the municipality. You see what they're currently using and you have, you do have some growth going about sixty three or feet, which could be approximately about a hundred new connections in the future. So things that we are also looking at, so some of the things is agriculture, especially in Carson Valley, are we seeing some changes? Right now, the USGS models assume agriculture use is staying same. We're actually going to analyze that more closely. One of the things we've been asked to look at too is there are a lot of commercial wells going in in Line County. How much of an impact will that be? That's not part of the municipality. So Loomis did not look at that. So we're also been looking at those. We're going to look at weather trends. What's happening? What happens in dry years? What happens with climate change? What is that going to be doing to the water supply? Also, the Alpine decree. One thing that's very unique about this is again, Alpine decree regulates surface water flows. So you're saying, well, we're talking about groundwater. Well, again, we have that surface groundwater interaction going through. But as soon as the river goes on regulations, downstream user cannot pull that water, cannot call for that. So when La Honton is in priority, it's in the winter and springtime. So when you have a really dry year, you may actually see less impact to La Honton because they're not legally entitled to that water. So the impacts may be in this watershed, more in wet years than dry years. And that's something that we're looking at, looking at those trends. So again, it's kind of interesting here. And again, the modeling, we're going to go through, we're going to run the model. We're going to get the results. We're going to meet with all the water purveyors, give them an update. Here's what's going on and then get feedback at that time from. This is something, I'm going to cut this out just because of time. We're looking at some groundwater pumping for agriculture. There does seem to be a trend and some changes there, and we're going to spend some time analyzing this data. So again, determine if there's significant water and infrastructure as we look in the next thirty years for the municipalities. What will future demands and river discharge have? Look at those different things. And then recommend possible mitigation. If there's impacts, how can you mitigate it? There may be already mitigation occurring Line County, Carson City. We want to be prepared. But ultimately, what's going to happen behind this model is what's called a capture model. This is being used in the Humboldt. And they're looking at impacts on groundwater to surface water users and have you mitigate? They may even be turning wells off. We want to be ahead of the curve. We'll have some data here that your planning process in the future will be prepared when that capture model comes into the Carson and how the state engineer may try to administer in the future. So with that, I'll turn to questions. We will hopefully have good results. We'll be working with your staff in probably a year and a half.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hocken. I really appreciate your being here and your presentation today, sir. What recommendations would you give us regarding protecting our water rights, protecting future growth and keeping us ahead of that herb that you were just talking about?
I think the biggest thing is understanding what's going on and having the data. You already have a master plan. I know I've heard you guys are going to update your master plan as you move forward. This is going to give you better information as you move forward. Have, you know, some people say, well, if you got the information, others can use against this. Have, you know, some people say, well, if you got the information, others can use against this. The biggest one, if you know what's going to happen, you can better prepare and know where to, where those impacts may be and also to counter it. And we represent the entire watershed. So when people in Churchill County come up, they say, oh, my goodness, all this growth is going in, they're taking our water. Well, there's probably some truth to that, but it's maybe not the magnitude that they think. And this is what we're trying to do. Right now, you've got the realm, but some people think it's a hundred percent, others think it's none. We're done, we're going to be closer. So I have a better understanding of this. So this will really give you the information as you move forward and saying, hey. We got this going on. We have the water rights, but if I put this well right next to the river and it's impacting the flows of the river. What's the impact? This may give you a better understanding of saying, we may not want to put it there. We may want to put it over here. Or we have this mitigation going through. And with the CWSD, we own some water rights that could be also used to mitigate those impacts. So this will protect you in the future.
Right. Um, another question, do wells? Uh, do the number of wells or having wells? Do they affect surface water? I mean, does water soak into the ground faster because there's wells in the area?
Good question. Um, what will happen if you have a well near the river? When you turn on a well, you call drawdown. So you draw down the water around it. Now initially, it's taking water out of storage to go to the well. But if you pump it long enough, you may then intercept flows of the river that were going to, or flows from the Luvio. That would have gone to the river, or you may actually draw water from the river to your well. And that is the concern that's going through the state. That's a concern in Churchill County. Are you taking that water that's pumping? That would actually flow in the river, but you're now taking it out of the river. You're not taking it directly, but you're pulling groundwater that's sucking that water from the river. Those are the things that we want to look at.
And that, that is a phenomenon or whatever that does happen.
Oh, yes. In fact, on the Humboldt River, because of all the groundwater pumping in the upper Humboldt. The senior water rights, the farmers down Lovelock are not getting their water that they used to do historically. Now, we're not in that bad situation today. We're actually ahead of the curve. So we don't have a huge impact. But we're seeing a significant impact on the Humboldt. And that's why that's, they're looking at those. And then we will be looking here on the Carson.
And then my final question, uh, Chairman Hocken, the pipeline that runs from, um. Oh, God, uh, what? Vidler, uh, well, how far does that plan on extending?
Um, I don't think Fiddler actually owns a pipeline. There are, there's regional pipelines in today. So we do have. Pipeline that goes from Minden all the way to Carson City. There is a pipeline that ties Carson City to the Mount House area. And I know that Vidder spent a lot of money upgrading the water system in the Dayton area to move. There is proposal to someday move a pipeline from the Dayton utilities all the way to Silver Springs. We've been working with Lyon County on that. That is a pipeline that would provide water. Now the question is where is water going to come from? Those are things that will be talked in the future, but that's probably your most promising source. Is to have that regional pipeline that can move water back and forth.
Thanks again.
Okay.
Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. I had, uh, I've seen this presentation more times than I care to. One, one of the things that still bothers me a little bit on this presentation is the dates. Because you, every, every system, uh, you know, some started. Two thousand and seven, some started two thousand and five, some ended two thousand twenty-one, some ended twenty-three. And when you start doing data like that, to me, it's cherry picking without an understanding of why you pick those dates. So if, if you're. Going to continue to use those, those dates, I'd like it in the presentation so that we understood that it isn't cherry picking. It's because that was the only reason. The only possible dates that you had reference for or whatever, whatever the understanding of those dates is.
And I appreciate that. Um, a lot of this data is what we get from the state engineer. So in fact, earlier presentations, I was cut off and stated from the Eagle Valley of twenty seventeen, because that's all we got. We just got information up to twenty twenty-two. So that's why some of those are twenty twenty-two, some are twenty twenty-one. It's the data we're taking. Now, we can go back earlier. Um, in Carson Valley, they go back to the nineteen eighties. Um, but some of the earlier ones are Carson. Or the Dayton groundwater basins and all those, they don't go as far back. And so we take the data we have available. We do actually have groundwater, we actually have municipal water use all going back to the early, um, two thousands. So we do have, and that data is going to be incorporated. It's just that this is the data I have that can show you that's been published. I appreciate.
And another thing that I had there, I have probably four things here. One of the other ones was, uh, it was brought up about drilling next to the river and the infrastructure, the ground system up in, uh. The Humboldt is completely different than ours. And so when you get general, generalities of. It's if you, you're close to the river, no one knows what that is, but it's also the makeup of the, of the land. I can take you to a well that I drill. That's, that's just a little over a quarter mile from the lake. On the deep end, and my well is over a thousand feet deep without water. So do you see what I'm saying?
And that's what I think of the model. The model actually models those. Um, so that's the nice thing about the USGS. They already have this built in. So in Lyon County, you do have tighter soils. But in Carson Valley, we've seen that a well could be two thousand feet away and have an impact to the river, but that model will actually look at those. So you're correct. You can't take one model and say it's going to be able to say, every model is specifically for each region.
And there's a couple of other things, because I, I keep seeing how Churchill County is the one that's trying to gather more water. At their end. And instead of, I, I have no studies on their water systems. Uh, which I'd love to see that the desert, Carson Desert studied, and I don't see any slowdown in their growth. They're just acquiring more, trying to acquire more water. And so I, I see the competition going a little bit there, and I think we should, should understand the Carson Desert. And how that works instead of just focusing on one. The upper reaches, I think it's a, a combined thing that we have to look at. And also, I think the most important thing that you mentioned was, uh, perennial yield versus system yield. And to me. It's a system yield. It, it, that's how you, you took a lot out of agriculture, but we put in lawns, right? So there's water going back in. You know, the same as agriculture, but in smaller spots. Uh, but then we also have deceptive systems that are. They're putting water back in. There's different ways of put water back in and make it a system yield. And to me, that's so much more important than. For any yield because, and I hate the legislature because it says in times of drought. Well, the state of Nevada is in drought and it always has been. I don't care what years you pull up, except for, uh, up against the, the mountains there. Every place else is because it comes down a river for the most part. And it's always been coming down a river and it hasn't been perennial yield. So to me, it's just more important for that. But again, thank you for, for your, uh, presentation. I can't say I'm looking forward to seeing it again, but, but I'll wait for it.
I, I want to answer you. We are looking at Churchill County. We've actually done some analysis early on in Churchill County, the water. But USGS models are just the upper one. We do have information on the lower and we, I can talk to you about some of the stuff that's going on down there. And I would totally agree. I think we need to really focus on, especially in this watershed, perennial means nothing. It is a system yield. Um, you've got Carson Valley. You've got so much agriculture recharge. The perennial is one thing. The biggest thing is in Churchill County, I'll let you know, their perennial is twenty-five hundred. But they're pumping over eighteen thousand. But because of all the agriculture recharging that. You don't see an impact to groundwater levels or anything down there. So again, perennial yield doesn't even make sense down there. It's a system yield that needs to be, and that's what we want to focus on in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for the presentation. I haven't seen it as many times as Commissioner Keller has, but it was, it was interesting. Just one observation, uh, how you pointed out the increase in domestic water use during the COVID years. Cause everybody thought they were gardeners. Everybody had a garden. You couldn't buy cannon jars anyway. So that was just another factor in that.
No, I just want to thank you. I've probably seen this quite a few times too, since I serve on the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. But I do, uh, I too would like to see the information for, um. Fallon Churchill County and see what their situation really is.
We have information, we can do that at this point. I get, if I don't give the information to the USGS now. It'll be even further off.
I think we've covered everything, all the questions. Uh, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a great day.
You too. Have a good, uh, safe trip over to Gardnerville. Yeah, out, out to Douglas. Uh, yeah, gonna go ahead and jump to seven A so that the deputies and sheriff's department can. Move, move out of here and go back out on the, the streets for us. Um, so seven A for presentation only. Present Deputy Beck with the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Life Saving Award. Sheriff Pope.
Uh, good morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. It's a tough act to follow, I know, that's. But, uh, today we're here to recognize Deputy Benjamin Beck. Uh, Deputy Beck started with us, uh, in November of last year. And, uh, has been a valuable asset, uh, for the sheriff's office so far. So, um. Deputy Beck was actually recognized from Chief Harvey of the, uh, Central Lion Fire Department. And he wrote on May second, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Lyon County Dispatch received a nine-one-one call. For a male who had collapsed and was unconscious and unknown breathing at two hundred Railroad Street in Dayton. Uh, Central Lion Fire arrived on scene to find Lyon County Sheriff's Office Deputy Benjamin Beck. Uh, performing quality chest compressions. On the down subject. Uh, the fire department then took over and confirmed that the male subject was in cardiac arrest. And set up their Lucas device and took charge of the emergency medical care. Uh, the patient received multiple shots, IV medications and airway interventions and. Some of this is technical terms from the fire department, so I don't know what it means, but the, the patient had ROSC on scene and was transported to Carson Tahoe Hospital. Where he had a purposeful movement and was taken to the cath lab shortly after arrival for STEMI. The patient was extubated on five-five with very sore ribs from the Lucas device and taking. With full mentation and an expectation leave the hospital a few days or so. And so without Deputy Beck's intervention, uh, that person surely would have passed away. And, uh, so today we recognized Deputy Benjamin Beck with the life saving award from the Lyon County Sheriff's.
Hey, we're going to go to six B time certain at nine thirty for possible action. Acceptance of renewal proposal from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool. And approval for payment from fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five funds.
Frank Commissioners. I'm Brad Pierce with A and H Insurance. Uh, I'd like to, I guess, provide a couple of quick introductions. First of all, in the audience with us is Tanya Moharo. Tanya is fairly new to our municipality team. And I do know on, uh, Zoom, Caleb Frost is joining us. She is the co-producer. On the account with myself. She's also the municipality manager with the agency. She's at home doing this via Zoom due to a new daughter. So, and finally to my right is, uh. Stephen Romero. Stephen is the member, uh, uh, relation. Well, she can remember relationship manager with the NPAIP. So they'll be adding some comments. What I thought I'd do is start with a very brief interview overview of kind of the member program itself. Uh, as I think all of you have seen various presentations on this in the past couple of years, I will, will make them brief, but. The, uh, program itself, the pool was established in nineteen eighty-seven. And it was founded with basically four counties, Lyon County being one of those four. I did want to make the comments with Josh Foley, your comptroller over here. Serves as the chairman of the executive committees for the, uh, for the pool. And is also a member of the, I think, the fiscal committee, uh, for the cat, which is the workers compensation side of it. So you have very, very good representation, uh, as a member, um, with the group. There are currently a hundred and forty-one members of that group. Be it municipalities, GIDs, all the various elements within that. I would comment that, uh, K and H Insurance actually handles forty-two of those. So we're. Uh, very active in this. Um, with that, the specific program itself, the master policy. Really has not changed in the last couple of years. Provides extensive coverages, very, very high limits. Uh, and very comprehensive coverage parts. I won't go into a lot of detail on that unless there are any specific questions on that. Um, I would make the general comment that, uh, there really has been, uh. A softening of the marketplace over the last year. And with that, somewhat your property, uh, values, property rates have remained relatively flat. A lot of that's due to, uh, as I say, the marketplace itself. Some of it's due to the efforts of the. Pool, so I'm pointing to Stephen specifically because he was in London negotiating. Rates as far as the reinsurance on this program. So they did a yeoman's job this well, uh, this year, if you will. Um, having stated that, basically, what's really, uh. Uh, showing the differences in the overall premiums or contributions being paid. Are the changes in the, uh, actual underwriting or rate structures and not great structures, but the elements within that itself. That being your statement of values, your auto counts, your payroll changes as far as employees. Changes in your law enforcement, et cetera. So having stated that, I guess I'd like to be a little more specific to Lyon County itself. And I begin by saying, uh, I did a little bit of analysis of your loss history. Over the last four and a half years, since we have not completed this last, I guess you'd say, policy year. Uh, approximately four million, uh, eighty, excuse me, million four hundred and eighty-nine thousand has been paid in claims. Uh, the last couple of years have been relatively light as far as claims, uh. Uh, currencies as well as the amounts being paid out. The biggest portion of this, as most of you know, there was the, uh. Train Depot fire in two thousand and nineteen, which was about seven hundred thousand dollars of that million for what I just mentioned. Um, as far as the contribution for this year or premium, looking at nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Uh, which is a six point five nine percent increase over the prior year. As I stated prior, the, uh, rates have remained relatively flat. So the difference in the premium dollars is really the. Increases in the exposure base that have come about during the past year. I'll just briefly mention your payroll. It's gone from twenty-four to twenty-three six, which is not just, uh, million, which is not a significant change. But your statement of values has gone from a hundred and fifty-two million to a hundred and fifty-nine million in value. in values or a four point eight percent increase. Uh, your vehicle counts, you've gone from two hundred and ninety six vehicles to three hundred and twelve, which is a five point four percent increase on the vehicle accounts. Uh, law enforcement, which is an area where you are seeing some increases, you've had an increase of one individual as far as that you've, uh, gone from sixty two to sixty three members in your law enforcement group. And finally, your overall employee count is up three percent, little over three percent. It's gone from three hundred and sixty five to three hundred and seventy six or eleven new employees. And finally, you've got a twenty five thousand dollar maintenance deductible selected as far as your claim standing, et cetera. Um, so I guess unless there are specific questions to that portion of the program, I would go ahead and turn it over to Stephen. Uh, he was gonna discuss some of the elements that are both new, but are really being pushed by your, uh, pool group as far as risk management services and different types of programs and services that are available through the human resource element.
Word of record, Stephen Romero with Full Pack.
Yeah, question, sorry, Mr. Jacobs.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockley. So are the, what did you say our increase was again, sir?
Uh, it's six point five nine percent. Uh, it's gone to nine hundred and fifty two thousand one oh seven.
But that is, that is because of growth and not market driven.
Very much so.
Okay.
Yeah, the rate structure has remained relatively flat. Uh, I think the only, and Stephen can comment, uh, the only real areas where there's been rate concern is again on the law enforcement and actually the cyber aspect of it.
Thank you, Chairman Hockley. Thanks, sir.
Any further question? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Steve Romero with Full Pack. Um, again, want to shout out, uh, with regards to Josh, because not only does he sit on on those committees, but he sits on various other, uh, boards and committees within Full Impact for us. And, uh, you know, with A and H, uh, being our agent for us, you know, we couldn't do without them as well, so want to give them a shout out as well. With regards to the services that are within the pool. Remember, this is your pool. This is, this, you own this. You, you give us orders as to what to do. We're just your staff. And, uh, there's a hundred and forty one members as, as Brad had talked about, and we end up taking that and building these different programs out. And it, it all comes from requests from all the members, so if there's something that, that you would like to see or, or that there's a need for, you know, bring it to us and maybe, maybe we put together another program or or something to be able to build out this whole pool that you belong to and you own. Um, looking at your, uh, risk management side, uh, you've had two passive network assessments. This is your pen testing on your computer systems that Tony Rucci does for us. And those cost around eighteen thousand dollars for each one of those. Um, and when I say that it costs us, it costs the pool. It doesn't cost you Lyon County directly. And then we've had three jail assessments that have been done at about twenty five thousand dollars apiece, uh, over the last, uh, three years. Grant money wise, you've received about twelve hundred dollars in grant money. Uh, you also are participating in the NOB four program. This is the fishing program, uh, for your emans. And that's about fifty two hundred dollars a year. And the HR program, you, you utilize that very extensively, which is fantastic. You know, this assists in the entire pool. We want, we want to gain that from the pool members is to be able to use these programs because we are a risk management pool. We're not insurance. We do the risk management to make sure that we don't have the losses, but when we do, we have coverage that's available to come in and cover over that loss that maybe we have where the risk management didn't work. But on the HR side over the last three years, utilized, uh, you know, to put a value to it about a hundred and eighty five thousand. So over the last three years, Lyon County has utilized and received, uh, services from pool of about three hundred thousand dollars, so about a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, you know, congratulations to you and to your staff, uh, with regards to utilizing, you know, the program and being safer because you are utilizing that risk management portion. Um, want to also touch on the e-learning side. Uh, e-learning is fantastic for you as well because you don't have to have your employees leave their job. You know, they can, it's a ten, twenty minute class that they're able to take. You don't lose time for them going out to, you know, for days, venture out to Reno or wherever. Uh, but last, this year, um, to last year and, and utilization is incredible. Uh, completed courses, uh, two thousand nine hundred and twenty three this year, last year, two thousand seven hundred and sixty nine. So again, amazing that, that you're utilizing that. When I've gone out to the other entities just recently, you know, they're in the hundreds, not the, not the thousands like you are. So thank you for, for utilizing that, that e-learning as well. Uh, with that, I'm just gonna open it up for any kind of questions or, or conversation you want to have.
No question.
You mentioned that e-learning, uh, did, does, I guess the word I'm looking for is, is, does it really work compared to to actually going somewhere and learning with an instructor?
I believe it does. And, and you know, those courses are actually designed specifically for public entities. And, um, if there is a course that needs to be completed or, or needs to be designed, you can work with Mike Van Houten over at the pool and he can actually design courses for any department. And we'll probably end up in, if it's a really, you know, structured course that we can roll out to other members, it's, you know, members helping members.
Yeah, I was just, the impact, as far as whether it actually works or where you see in any problem areas or anything like that, so.
No problem there.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman Hockley, regarding that e-learning, I do believe too that it's, uh, by requiring those, it actually looks good if we do have a lawsuit come up. It's protection for us, correct?
Most definitely. It, it does give us, give us, gives us the pool, uh, some backing to be able to say, yeah, you know, we did.
They've been trained.
Exactly. They've been trained.
I do have a question since I'm the commissioner that does the quarterly inspections for the jail. Um, I would like an information copy, uh, or at least a synopsis of the copies that you have from the, uh, inspections of the jail. Gives me, yeah, the assessments that I can kind of look at those areas if there happen to be any, uh, problem areas, which I've not noticed in the past doing this for the last several years. But, uh, it'd be very informative for me to, uh, at least see the last one. It'd be nice to see all of them, but, uh, at least see the last one. Thank you. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Keller. Thank you for your presentation. I did notice that Kayla looks like she's not at home. She's in the desert somewhere vacationing.
All right, well, we will go to our next time certain. Oh, oh, action, I'm sorry. Yep, we've got to accept that, uh, an action item. Um, so, uh, at this point, we have a possible action acceptance of the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool PAC. Any public comment on that? Public comment on this presentation, on us accepting this pool pack? No? Okay. Then, uh, I will look for a motion to, uh, accept renewal proposal.
I move to, uh, accept and, uh, the renewal proposal from the Nevada Public Agency Pool and approval for payment for fiscal year twenty four, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five funds.
Second.
Okay. So, uh, motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will accept the approval. We will go to six C. For presentation only, Nevada Department of Transportation update on the speed management project on U.S. Highway fifty in Mound House. Thanks for that catch, no problem.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Jay Pullen, representing Nevada Department of Transportation. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's been a long time since I have been here and, uh, hopefully, um, my goal today is to provide an overview of the U.S. Fifty Mound House Safety Speed Reduction Project.
No.
So the purpose of this presentation is to provide where we are on the project. And that is kind of the first thing what I, I want to focus on is to let you know kind of our speed management action plan. You know, identifying how we post speeds, you know, can be, can be confusing for some, and also it, it could be a kind of a marmite issue where those are for and those against. And what I want to show you is that Barban has moved forward with a program that complements historical, but also fills some of those gaps. So bear with me as I go through it. My hope today is just so I can kind of bring you up to speed on how we approach speed management. And then at that point, I'll move forward with our traffic analysis of Mound House at U.S. Fifty. And then after that, move forward to end us proposal for changes. And then, of course, uh, next steps where we are. So as I mentioned, when you look at speed management, a lot of times you can look at our partnering agencies. You can also look at other states. They're different. Now, sometimes there are some correlations such as on the traffic side, we look at things, so what we call the eighty fifth percentile speed. What does that mean? That means if, if I track the speed of vehicles driving through a, a specific area and a hundred vehicles pass, and then I look at it and I put them in order from the lowest speed to the highest speed. And I go, I draw a line at what I call the eighty fifth percentile speed, and what that means is that eighty five vehicles are driving this specific speed or less. It's typically what we do so that a lot of times you might see an argument about we, we designed a speed trap. And what we try to do is we try to look at speed harmonization to make sure that the posted speed that we have out there is what the majority of the vehicles are, are driving. But of course, this is just one piece, and since twenty twenty two, we move forward with a speed management action plan. This as we look at is more a holistic approach where we look at other things such as planning, operations, we combine them and incorporate them into design. And what I mean by that is that we look at what we call roadway environments. And roadway environments, we look at how that road is intended to be used, and we also look at the multimodal. What are the, what are the vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles? What is that primary use? And does it make sense based on the speed? So with that said, the speed management action plan has three strategies of approaches. The proactive approach is that we jump in early and we're looking at speed when we're at the planning level. We're looking at speed when we're in the design level, and then we follow up in the operations. The decisions we make make sense. The comprehensive part is that we can't make these decisions in a bubble, and so it is important to us that we do get feedback from our partners. These are stakeholders of the community. These are leaders such as yourselves, and our intent really is to make sure while the decision is ultimately department when it comes to our highways, we want that feedback because some of these, some of the feedback you give us will be helpful on the strategy we move forward with. And then the systematic, the systematic is we need to be consistent on how we approach, identify troubled areas. We know areas on the roadways that have speed issues. And be able to systematically identify those issues and then use strategies, specific mitigation strategies. Sometimes it's education, sometimes it's law enforcement support, and sometimes it's geometric design to complement what we consider a target speed, that roadway environment that we identified. And the one thing I just want to mention for, uh, rural statistics, you know, even though six percent of the Nevada population lives in rural communities, twenty eight percent of fatals occur in those same rural communities, which is very significant and why we take this so seriously. So now that I kind of painted the picture of our speed management action plan, what did we do for U.S. Fifty Mound House? What we did was we used lidar technology to collect data. The type of data we collected was vehicle speeds. We collected pedestrian movement. We looked for conflict points. Conflict points could be vehicle to vehicle, pedestrian to vehicle, bicycle to vehicle. And then also we looked at crash history, and historically we look at three to five years of crash history along that border. And so one of the things I want to point or at least bring to your attention when you look at this slide is the pedestrian activity. It's not as easy as just throwing down a pavement marking sidewalk and saying, here you go, we fixed the problem. As you can see, when you track the path of pedestrian movement, they're all over the place. And you could have a sidewalk ten feet away, but that doesn't mean that pedestrians are going to use it because they're going to go with the easiest path to get them to their destination. So knowing what we know now, you're seeing kind of the pattern here is that it's not as simple as just using hit markings. We need to do more. Not only that, one of the critical things we identified is that the posted speed in this area is forty five miles an hour. But people are driving it as the eighty fifth percentile speed, eighty five of a hundred vehicles are driving at fifty seven miles. But that also means that you have fifteen vehicles out there during that hundred sample, driving it over that amount. And to give you some context of what we're looking at here is if I'm driving thirty miles an hour in a vehicle and I hit a pedestrian, the chances of a fatal is forty percent. If I raise the speed and I'm driving that same vehicle forty miles an hour, if I went from thirty to forty, I double the chance of a fatal. So when you look at vehicle speeds that are anywhere between forty five or greater, forty to forty five or greater, that's serious. The risk of survival from pedestrian hit is very small. And that is why when we looked at this location, it's not enough to throw a sidewalk down. We have a speed issue. In order to combat and be able to facilitate a pedestrian crossing, we need to drop that speed. And that's the reason why we're going to move forward with what we are proposing today. So when you look at U.S. Fifty and the Mound House area, if you're familiar with that area, the existing forty five mile an hour zone is what we are interested in. Specifically where the residential communities are at Highlands, we're focusing basically from the railroad bridge to basically the dispensary. And so the idea here is this zone is already posted forty five. We're proposing to drop it further, so it'll transition to fifty five miles an hour from that rural suburban community environment. And then transition it to what we would consider a, a rural township and dropping that speed down to thirty five miles an hour. So that's approximately one point two miles. But we know now that we just can't put a sign out there and people are going to comply. We know it's more of a holistic thing. We need law enforcement, uh, law enforcement support. We need community support. We also need to do more than just signs, the basic posting a sign. So what are we doing? We broke this down into three phases. The first phase for the reduction of this, of this zone to thirty five miles an hours, we're going to use overhead signs. Overhead signs, I'm sorry, I said overhead signs. I apologize. I meant oversized signs, so larger signs, signs that are more legible, but also bring more attention to the motorists. The other thing we're looking at is that we're going to use transverse striping. And this has been in fact effective in other areas. The intent of the transverse striping is sometimes when you're in the road, you don't realize how fast you're driving. When you have little tick marks, it makes you a little bit more aware of how fast you're going. And when we tell you that we're dropping that speed, you're going to notice that, and our hope is that it'll be, be additional enhancement to show you to slow down. But of course, that in itself is not the only thing we can do. We have to do more. We have ordered what we call smart signs, and the lead time for that unfortunately can be three months to as long as six months. But as soon as we get those in, we're going to implement part two or phase two.
You're out of order.
And phase two, our intent is once the materials come on board, we're going to be utilizing technology. So one of those is the LED border signs that flash. So for the regulatory sign for the thirty five, the driver would then see the flashing sign. The next sign that they would see would be a radar feedback sign that would show them their speed to what the posted speed is. So that's the intent is that now we're enhancing it with our smart technology. And then the third phase is what we saw, we consider the major And then the third phase is what we saw, we consider the major construction project. The intent here is we want to first fix the speed. And then the next thing we want to do is move forward to improving the pedestrian crossing area. Now we need to look at the the construction impacted. There's drainage air issues out there. So we have to look at drainage. We have to look at right of ways such as utility and what what property we have out there to make sure whatever design we come up with can work. And so as of right now, phase three is currently in scoping within roadway design, we'll come up with a proposed scope for the pedestrian enhancements. This may also enhance additional improvements that we can make if necessary to improve, basically support thirty five mile an hour zone within that section. And kind of, I got two slides left. The intent here too, I mentioned before, as part of our as part of our speed management plan, it's it's public outreach, education, working with our partners. And as mentioned in the past on this project, you know, Carson City is moving forward with their studies. And that's something that we're we're reviewing their drafts participating in because we want to make sure whatever we have complements as a whole. And then, of course, I kind of an overview and dot I mentioned that we're looking at, we're looking at our three phases, reducing the speed, addressing that first, and then moving forward with enhancements for protecting the pedestrian crossing areas. And as you can see on that lidar, it's all over the place. We need to make some changes so that it makes more sense for pedestrians to know where to go. And then at this point, our intent here is we're here speaking to you today. We plan to then go to the mountain house citizens advisory board, give them an update as well. And then partnership, I can't stress enough, it is important. We want your feedback. And not only that, I just wanted to let you know, we have brought up this proposed speed reduction with Carson City and then, of course, Nevada Department of Public Safety and state police. So again, we realized too that enforcing that new speed change is also just as important. So that's something we're working and coordinating with them on. And then my last slide, this is kind of like a safety plug. And what I want to leave it with is that right now we have a program. So local road safety plan. This plan is we basically it's a partnership with NDOT. And it's federally funded. So there's no, there's no additional cost to the county. This is one of those things as a proven countermeasure by FHWA. So the federal highways is is very supportive of this program. And I just want to throw that out there. If you're interested, let us know. Like I said, it is funded through federal funds. This is something that we we partnered with Carson City with right now. And we'd be happy to include the county. So just let us know and we'll definitely work with you and we can move forward with a plan such as this. A lot of fatalities and serious injuries occur on local streets that are not part of the state highway system. And I believe something like this could support and enhance and improve safety. And that concludes my presentation.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you go back to the slide that actually shows the project? Okay, just just a couple of comments on this. I actually think you should shift the whole project a half a mile west. Drop the speed limit in Carson City to thirty five to slow them down before they get to Mount House. And then team up with the Carson City Sheriff's Office and NHP to start, you know, enforcing that before they get to Mount House. Yeah, because I think, you know, I don't really think you need to go all the way out to the dispensary because there's, you know, once you get past Highlands, the residential kind of goes away. But, you know, no big deal of it. And even put up all the signs you want. People aren't going to slow down. At least not to thirty five, but good luck. So we definitely need to do something out there and we can. And I hope that the scoping and stuff on the pedestrian crosswalk can be expedited. Because that is a major concern out there.
I have a question in the pedestrian versus vehicle conflicts. Is speed a factor? Or is it the idea of reducing the speed is just so that when they do happen, there's less likely a loss of life?
Through the chair to respond to your question, it's a great question. Speed is a factor. In fact, the comment speed kills isn't is is safe to say that is the number one issue that we have. And I think that's the part that I don't think we we realize because it doesn't feel like much for us to go forty miles an hour. But when I explain to you from going thirty to forty, you're doubling the chances of that pedestrian dying from that impact is phenomenal. And I think that is what we're trying to, and it's not just in this area. It's statewide. Speed is an issue.
Commissioner Keller.
I got a whole bunch to say. First of all, you're really going to hurt our economic growth in in our area. For one thing, we're looking for freeway standards and not for bring it down to boulevards. And this is basically what you've done. You've had in the past, we've looked over this in the past. So there's a history and end on to where you looked into baggage roads, frontage roads, grade separations. Those were all on the on the table in the past, but we we didn't go ahead with that because we put in USA Parkway instead at the time because funding. But we need to get back to that. You're you're going after a speed problem. You're punishing the gun manufacturer for how somebody used the gun. The problem is access management, not it's how people cross that road. It's not the speed of getting people from one place to another. You're talking about going to different advisory boards. We have advisory boards. This is going to impact the whole county and other parts of the state for the trucking industry. I'd love to for their input on this. To me, you're going the easiest solution in reaction to what has happened. And that isn't the, that's just going off the sins of the past and not thinking ahead. It's like going building all the boulevards that you and haven't going through Carson right now. That should be a highway freeway system all the way to the other freeway. All the way through Lyon County and up through friendly up to I eighty. That's the direction I would like you to be going, not into this, keep slowing it down, slowing it down. Economic growth, they look at four things on that transportation, a waterway, railway, freeway standards and airports. And we don't have any of that going through that area except for the, we have a highway, but not a freeway. And that's what we need for economic growth is a freeway standard. And you're you're putting up obstacles instead of creating solutions. You're slowing it down to where we won't get more growth in into what we need in Lyon County. You look at that eighty five percent percentile. And if you go by that understanding, you're 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 dropping us down into what percentile? It's not even close to the eighty five of what people actually drive by going down to thirty five. So no one's going to do thirty five. I agree with my fellow commissioner. You're just going to have people hurry up and get through there just as fast as you. If you slow down when the speed of traffic is going fast, you create more road rage, more accidents, everything else. I know what it's like to, if you were driving through there right now and you tried to do forty five, you'd have people running off the road or honking at you and everything else because they're in a hurry to get to where they need to be. So you're not going to solve anything. You're just going to create more road rage, more problems, everything else. I hate this whole plan. To me, this was a something to pull off a book and say, oh, this is how we can solve everything to an immediate problem that we have. You're not thinking long term. So that's my say.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Akada. If possible, because we get feedback from our advisory boards, if it's possible, I know you said you were going to hit this mound house advisory board, but if we could hit those before coming here, that would be great. And I know I'm sure timing or whatever. So but we get feedback from those boards and it's valuable to us. So you said six percent live in the rurals and but we have considerable more out of out of area traffic through our areas of the twenty eight percent fatalities, how and you maybe don't have these statistics, but of those, how many are involved with people from out of the area causing that just maybe not knowing or not seeing the signage or in a hurry to get through? How many of those twenty eight percent of those fatalities are involved with people from outside of our area?
Through the chair, Commissioner, I don't have that information in front of me. What I can say is I can understand sometimes as a thoroughfare traffic or we call ourselves maybe transient type of traffic. There's been, one of the things I noticed is when we were having a lot of stakeholders discuss speed as an issue statewide. The perception is is it's out of state drivers that are the majority or the culprits for speeding. And at least anecdotal feedback that we would see from law enforcement, that wasn't the case. That more times than not, when they were looking at their speeding tickets, they were Nevada driver's license, not California or Utah or Arizona. So that was one of the things that is that it's a perception that it's that, but a lot of times it's local.
Yeah, see, that's not my perception. I was just curious as to what because I do want to keep our our citizens, all people safe, but this, you know, especially our 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 residents for sure. I do appreciate you coming here today. This is not, I know not an easy fix. So thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, you brought up a point that a couple of things that I wrote down, but I didn't mention. I really don't want to see more sign pollution going down mound house either. And that's just to me, that's just adding more, that's by bigger, better signs up there. I don't want to see that. The way that Northern Nevada works economically is that we are bedroom communities. We have to commute to go to work. And that's just going to slow down our commute, change our way of life out in the rurals. It's our lifestyles that out here, but we have to go to work there. So that takes more time away from us and our families by slowing down the speed limit. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And are you also talking to the economic like go ahead and the other state people? Because every time that Endot's been here, I've commented on bringing this up to freeway standards. And then you bring us a report like this that doesn't even resemble freeway standards. Do you talk within your agencies? That within departments about the which direction we want to go or how it impacts us? Because I, we talked to go ahead, we talked to other people. Do you talk to them?
So through the chair, excellent question. And and don't get me wrong, our intent is not to impact commerce and I commute. I work at Carson City, but I commute from Reno. So I share that pain sometimes in terms of driving through. When you, when you say freeways, I'm assuming what you mean is kind of like interstate standards, control of access. And instead of having we're we're having interchanges. Is that what you're referring to, Commissioner?
Every, every time I go down and talk to, I've talked to a lot of people in there and end on. And they say what we're looking for is freeway standards. That's having on ramps, off ramps, freeway standards, not not controlled access highways. Because you're not, okay, if you look at Highway fifty, we're never going, you're never going to get another road that we could have a freeway through there. You better take care of the one we have. Right? And that's the only spot we can go to freeway standards. Right? To have a freeway connect. So that's what that's the direction we'd like to go, or at least I'd like to go.
And Commissioner, I mean, yes, I don't, I don't disagree with it. I don't have the numbers in front of me to to back the freeway volumes to justify it. Granted, I guess when I'm looking at interstate, for example, to give you an envision is so we're talking about a US route. US routes have a higher level standard design than let's say a state route does. And then the lowest form of route is a frontage road in terms of quality of pavement for loading shoulders. How we design horizontal, vertical curves, all of those based on those what we consider roadway classification. So when I think of interstate interstate in its in its primary fashion is what you're talking about. We say control of access, which means we have the abutters rights. So all access to that road has got to be in the interchange type design. And we work, I mean, based on forecasting and traffic information, we use that data to justify those types of things. And the the biggest one we've seen so far in this area has been I five eighty. The expansion of I five eighty, it was a US three ninety five route. And then we came through and section at a time you have to upgrade, which then does what you're saying. You're basically eliminating all those different types of modes. Because once you get to an interstate, we have signs up that say no pedestrians, no bicycles, and they have to use alternate routes. So your suggestion, I mean, you bring up good suggestions such as if you want this to be primarily a thoroughfare route to move freight or to move high speed vehicles, then yes, we have to separate the other modes of traffic, which is an overpass and underpass. You know, and then adding such as a frontage road and those types of things, that's more of an expensive solution. And as of right now, due to, you know, constraints, what we're trying to do, and I know it seems like this is an easy thing. It's not easy for me to be up here to tell you that we want to reduce the speed. Because anybody that drives through that area doesn't want to. But what we're looking at is that we believe this is something that we can do now that can make an impact and save lives.
So the way I look at it is there's beneficial use that also has to be considered with the freeway system that we can put through because you have to shut down traffic on five eighty every now and then because of winds and stuff like that. That's an alternate truck traffic. That's why we got USA Parkway. Why would the percentage of how we got that through because cost was a big thing, but there's good things that also have to be formulated in, right? So we can prove that that it's beneficial to get the freeway system in sooner than later. And to me, it's acquiring all the right of way that you need now, stuff like that. There's always, you guys have already done a study. You couldn't get all the right of way you wanted to see for frontage roads. So you had to do baggage roads, stuff like that. And then I haven't heard anything since we did USA Parkway. So where, where did that, all that information go with the direction we were headed? Because to me, that gets people off the, that that gets people onto other roads, just like what we did from from through stagecoach all the way through Silver Springs. You know, everybody likes that section of road. That's not freeway standard yet, but it's going in that direction. And that's what I'm trying to get at is I know it can't be done overnight, but let's go to get some frontage roads in, let's get some baggage roads in, especially in these bad areas and get people to start using those other things, fence it off. If you have to put a sound wall across there so people can't cross the road, let's do it.
Commissioner, what I'll do is I know what you're referring to. There has been studies on US fifty and though some of those are in motion, I don't have the the status of those in front of me. So what I can do is I can reach out to the project manager on that project and then provide that information.
Who is the project manager?
I don't know. I'm going to find out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just an observation. I'm glad to know that there's actually a methodology out there for setting speed limits. Because I've done extensive travel around the state through my past deployment. Sometimes I scratch my head, what the heck were you guys thinking? But I'm glad to know that there is a methodology. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. We will let you step off the hot seat then. Thank you for your, thank.
I want to make sure I say that. Thank you for coming here. And I'm sorry for if it seems like I'm beating up on you or anything else, but it's real important for me and everything. So I do thank you for coming and having a dialogue with us.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Pollin. All right, we're going to take a quick break here for the next five. So let's come back at about ten thirty four.
You are a troublemaker. Right there with you.
It is ten thirty five. We are going to reconvene. All right. We are down to item number eight, Commissioner and County Manager Reports. So let's start with Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended the National Association of Counties County Learning Institute, and that was actually very good training. Attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District. Attended the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Meeting on Tuesday. And took a tour of one of the new developments in Carson City where they're trying a different drainage approach. And that's it.
Go to Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you Chairman Hockaday. Um. I had a meeting with Tract Data Center regarding that land near the roundabout um, in Silver Springs there. That was very informational. Uh, I had a debt management um, meeting here at headquarters. Uh, that went very well. Was, uh, was in on the room tax board meeting. Uh, we had nine applicants. Um, and obviously not enough money to go around, but we had, I believe, thirty-nine thousand five hundred from room tax. Um, and got that um, divided up. All the applicants got some money. Um, really appreciated some of their. Uh, some of the presenters came much more prepared regarding numbers of people they bring into the county. Kind of uh, heads on the bed, so to speak, that they would bring in. Um, and just some of the unique um, nature of. Lion County and, and the events that we host here. Um, so I appreciated all, all, all of the applicants. Um, putting in and uh, bringing people to our great county. Uh, also attended Fernley High Graduation. I want to wish those two hundred and eighty-eight seniors well. Um, also attended a fundraiser uh, for the Fernley Community Foundation. Uh, that was hosted by All Out uh, Companies, uh, very thriving. Um, uh, thriving business, um, and uh, just really good people there. And then on a, a final note, I just want to send my condolences to the Don Parsons family. Um, as Don passed away, I believe on Monday, uh, a long time, uh, Fernley family resident. And uh, my uh, heart goes out to those folks. So that's all I have, Chairman Hockaday.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have much to report this week. I did go. I did attend the Campo meeting on June twelfth. One of the items that we did there was um, make the formal amendment. To Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Federal Physical Year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six. Transportation Improvement Program. And we added to it the, what Endot is calling the US fifty East Carson. Uh, project. For that, for um, rehabilitating the payment on, on US fifty and hopefully putting in some other, other changes so that we can keep it more of a freeway. And that's all I have, really.
Mr. Keller.
I do, I'd like to give my condolences to Don Parsons' family. Uh, I've known Don for a long, long time and uh, his wife Sherry, who sits on the school board. And uh, their son Donnie is one of the uh, building inspectors, the first building inspector in, in uh, Fernley. Uh, I also want to uh. Commend Commissioner Hendricks for successful uh, NACO trip for the Learning Institute and also for her uh, election. So congratulations on your election. I also attended uh, the Nevada Smart From the Start. Energy and Infrastructure Planning Consortium. The consortium uh, convenes to increase the. Coordination and integration of Smart From the Start Renewable Energy Planning, Siding and Transmission. In Lion County, among relevant state and federal agencies, tribes, industry representatives, environmental NGOs and other. Key stakeholders. And the reason why I, I went to that is to kind of get more of an understanding. Of what they're looking for when they're going for solar fields, for siding, where they're going to put them, also how the transmission lines are working. Uh, going through there. I did meet with uh, NV Energy and talk to them a little bit about uh, their transmission lines that are coming through. Also uh, attended the Carson River Water Sub Conservancy. So that's why I've seen it so much, so many times. I had James. Thing is because I, in those ones, and I'm also on the uh, Silver Springs Mutual Water Company Board, which is another water company that. He gives that presentation to. So that's the reason why I've seen so many of them. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Um, had a couple of meetings canceled, so. Get on with the first most important issue and uh, condolences to Parsons' family. Then uh, congratulations to Commissioner Hendricks on her uh, win in the primary and moving forward to be uh, Commissioner. For the next four years in this term. Uh, did have the agenda meeting, set up our agenda for today, a busy one. And um, I think all of commissioners met on the track uh, for. Projects that may be uh, in the future for Silver Springs area. And having said that, we'll move on. County Manager, um. Andrew is not feeling very well today, and so he said he would not have any report for me to give. So we will move on to uh, number nine, elected official reports. Do you have any elected officials that want to come up and talk today? I don't see the sheriff moving.
Mr. Chair, we have a note for the record that the sheriff did not stand up.
Yep. Absolutely. Yeah, we got a break today. Thank you, sir. Okay, and let's move on to number ten, appointed official reports. Community Development moving up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Gavin Henderson, Lion County Community Development Director. Just wanted to give a brief update. And we got a long agenda today. Some, some May statistics and some update on some. Favorite products that we've been working on and then uh, as well as the open positions that we currently have. Building Department, uh, we did uh, seven hundred and twenty inspections during the month of May, and we accepted a hundred and fifty-four new permits. Plan Department, we uh, had two new applications, one temporary instrument and one tentative subdivision map. Moving forward with the bigger projects, we have uh. The North Silver Springs Area Drainage Master Plan, that is becoming finalized and will be brought to you guys first meeting in August. So looking forward to that. Next, we have a South Source Springs Area Drainage Master Plan. We've been working with Lion County Staff and CWSD. To develop a scope work to help facilitate goals of the master plan and documents associated with that drainage master plan. So looking forward to that coming forward as well in, in the future. And then we're also doing an update to the drainage guidelines. Um, this update is to include uh, a modeling software that we could. Afford to developers on the, the front end to allow for them to have those numbers going into the project. And working with Dow to come up with that model and implement that to our drainage guidelines. And then we're also doing some minor updates to provide consistency to Title Ten. Um, chapter eight hundred, which is our floodplain management program. And then as far as open positions, um, our planning administrative assistant, um, Community Development Department has, has the position currently open. And is working through the list of applicants. Our plans examiner position, uh, we conducted interviews that have a prospective applicant and we extended the job offer, so it was a good responsibility as well. And as far as code enforcement officer, the Community Development Department will have interviews next week for that position. So looking forward to getting that one filled. That would be a huge help for us. So work through those complaints. We are, we're through backlog and it's kind of just keeps building up because uh, um, there's no one there to take it around. I do as much as I can, but. They do uh, uh, take a lot of time working through those um, good things. So just wanted to provide an update um, to the board and uh, if there are any questions. We could do these quarterly, uh, monthly. Uh, I was kind of, that was going to be one of my questions to ask you guys, just uh. Uh, if you guys have any input on that as well.
Yes, uh, we'll go to Commissioner Keller.
I'd like to see it monthly. I, I, I like the report, so, thank you.
Mr. Jacobson.
I was thinking maybe a daily email to all of us and maybe phone. I'm just kidding.
And then, yeah, I would say uh, the drainage master plans are going to be a huge help for the county just to establish those guidelines going forward. And just make development a little, little cleaner, a little easier for everyone, especially where those regional problems that we have.
Okay. Thank you for the report. We'll look forward to it monthly. Any other appointed official reports? Yeah.
Look at the agenda.
So we'll go to number eleven, Advisory Board Reports. And I don't see anybody coming up to the. Oh, Melinda, I was waiting for that hand to come up and I hadn't seen it. Ms. Cash.
Thank you very much, Melinda Cash, Chairman Mount House Advisory Board. Uh, we've had some interesting meetings recently. Uh, our last meeting, I especially want to. Thank Commissioner Henderson for coming. We always appreciate him giving us updates on what's going on at your end. I also want to thank uh, the Lion County Sheriff's Office for always sending somebody to represent. Uh, what's going on with the activity, especially with the criminal element. And this time we had a Deputy Daniel. Uh, he was very nervous. This was his first time and I want to put a shout out for him. He did an excellent job. Uh, but the biggest thing we received this time was a presentation from the Central Lion County. Our Central Lion Fire Department. We had Mike Peavers, Darren McMillan and Elizabeth Mink present just an excellent program to us. On fire safety and programs that they offer. And I would like that, hopefully they will present that at every board meeting because the information they provided was absolutely outstanding. Um, um, the other thing I wanted to mention is the most common complaint. I received every single meeting is speeding on Highway fifty. Uh. Anything we can do to help with that is so appreciated, so badly needed. Uh, what they're talking about is one point two miles. I don't know if you're aware of it, but from previous meetings. We were told that is the deadliest stretch of highway in the entire state. Which is so hard to believe, but people need to be aware of how deadly that section is. All of our residents complain on a constant basis how they can't get out of the side streets. To get on the Highway fifty because there's so much traffic and they're traveling at such a high speed. Uh, you know, from Dayton to Carson City, it's a racetrack. We have no stoplights. We have no way to slow that traffic down. Uh, the more you build to the east of us, the more we are going to have that problem, that traffic problem coming through Mount House. Uh, something needs to be done. Something needs to be done to protect our residents. And um, I hope we're going to get the support from the county commissioners to understand that. If you continue to build, then you have to do something to, you know, protect your communities to the west of where you're building. So thank you so much. Do appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything? Okay. Any other reports? From advisory boards? And we will move on. Item twelve, consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine. And may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an act, an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So let's look for commissioners, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like to pull item twelve F.
Okay, request for twelve F. Anything further? Any public, yes.
Chairman Hock, I don't need to pull anything. I just want to thank all those employees that go forward with putting in for grants and, and getting these awards. So. I, I just, I know we have a long agenda, but I just wanted to give a shout out to those folks.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other input, then I will look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda twelve A. Through uh, twelve M, pulling twelve F for further discussion.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So we'll move down to twelve F for possible action. Approve an amendment to the Health Services Agreement with Recon Technologies Incorporated. To extend the original healthcare agreement twelve additional months to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five with a five percent increase. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sherry. I'm certainly not against that. I just have to take care of some housekeeping on this one. NRS two eighty-one A dot four two zero requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. This item may affect my commitment in a private capacity to the interest of my wife. She is employed by Recon Technologies, medical provider that is the contractor for medical services at the jail. Her job is not dependent on approval of this item and her employment is not impacted one way or the other with the approval of this contract. Therefore, I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship. And because this is not a clear case of a disqualifying contract conflict of interest, I am going to be voting on this item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any uh, public input?
With that, Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve twelve F. Approving an amendment to the Health Services Agreement with Recon Technologies Incorporated to extend the original healthcare agreement. Twelve additional months to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five with a five percent increase.
Second.
Hey, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move on to thirteen A. On the regular agenda, public carrying unplanned items. For possible action to approve the conditional use permit request from Comstock Metals Corporation to operate an industrial scale facility. For the recovery and processing recycling of photovoltaic solar panels at six hundred Lake Avenue in Silver Springs. The use will include outdoor storage of solar panels, materials, pre and post-processing. On parcels subject to HI dash S, heavy industrial suburban zoning APN. Zero one five dash one four two dash one two, PLZ two zero two four dash zero one eight. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Lewis Cariola, Senior Planner, presenting.
Hold on a second.
Hold on, yes, yes.
I'm gonna do a statement real quick. I, Scott Keller performed a one-time contract for services as a licensed electrical contractor for Comstock Metals on their existing operation, not this one, but the other one. I do have, I do not have any peculiar interest in their current or future operations. Uh, my wife, Vida Keller, Priceless Realty, is of record selling the property many years ago to Sierra Springs Enterprises Incorporated and has no. Peculiar interest in Comstock Metals, so following NRS two eighty-one A, I hereby announce that I have no conflict in this matter before, so I will be. Voting on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Can I go ahead?
Thank you. Uh, the subject site is located in Silver Springs at six hundred Lake Avenue on the north side of Lake Avenue. Uh, these images show both the vicinity map as well as the location of the subject parcel relative to the Silver Springs Airport. Uh, the image on the right shows the airport just to the west of the subject parcel. Uh, zooming in here, we see the size of the parcel and its configuration at over twenty-six acres. Uh, we may, some people here may know the, the location of this site based on uh. It's surrounding a Lion County-owned parcel where the Lion County Sheriffs and Human Services uh, offices are located. Uh, you'll know that there's access to Lake Avenue on both the east and west side of that Lion County-owned parcel. Uh, more details here about the existing conditions on the site. Uh, these are images provided by the applicants and I, I put them in the PowerPoint because I did provide some excellent. Uh, drone footage. Uh, these are great pictures. Um, you note the Lion County parcel on the, the south side. And then uh, most notably, the existing structure at over a hundred forty-two thousand square feet. Uh, this is the location for the proposed uh, use. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out that that shop building that you call shop building is actually their building. The one that they're using right now.
Yes, sir. I'll get to that.
Okay.
So, um. As Commissioner Keller pointed out, there's also uh, second structure onsite, seventy-two hundred square foot structure. Uh, and I'll go into a bit more detail about its current and existing use uh, in a moment. Uh, in the back of the parcel, still on pavement, uh, there are a number of manufactured homes that are currently stored. I think something important to note here is that the proposal is not for new structures. Uh, not for addition of any impervious uh, surfaces. It's simply to use the existing structures onsite. So again, that includes seventy-two hundred square foot, uh, what's called the shop building in the applicant's materials and in the staff report. And then the hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred square foot production building. Uh, this is just a, a photo from the other end. Uh, does depict uh, the location of a construction trailer. Uh, this is just a photo from the other end. Uh, does depict uh the location of a construction trailer. Uh, Lion County Community Development did issue a temporary use permit in May uh for the placement of that trailer. It does meet all of our standards being that it's onsite on pavement and not a permanent structure. Um, and then I'll I'll expand a little bit here on on what Commissioner Keller had mentioned. Uh, I believe in twenty twenty-three, uh, we did issue an adminis- staff conducted an administrative design review. That's a staff level design review and uh planning entitlement to operate what's called a pilot program in the seventy-two hundred square foot building. Uh, it's a bit less intensive than the proposed CUP use. Um, but it was essentially a proof of concept uh endeavor. So at this point, having uh been successful at that that pilot program. Uh, the CUP here is a request for full expansion into the large. The production. Uh, again, pictures taken from the applicant's middle uh include some photos on the left. We see photos from the north side. Uh, the right photos from the east side of the very large building. Um, there's some some building material storage occurring in the hundred and forty-two thousand square foot building as well as a uh. Construction material operation, um, construction material fabrication operation called Rockon. And that silo you see is part of the existing Rockon use. Uh, I think it's still yet to be determined uh how much area exactly. The the new use would take up. Um, I've heard estimates between a hundred thousand square feet and the full building. Uh, but that would be between the property owner and the tenants to determine. Uh, more photos again provided by the applicants. On the left, we see uh the gated um access from Lake Avenue. And then on the right, there is that shop building, the seventy-two hundred square foot pilot operation building. Uh, we'll move in now to the to the planning level uh designations. First, the master plan in the character district. Uh, you'll note on the right, the entire area of Silver Springs, um, this portion of Lion County is designated as suburban character district. And the master plan designation is employment. Per the master plan, chapter three land use, uh, I just pulled out a blurb. Um, but some of the typical uses in the employment master plan designated uh district uh um in Lion County. Include light manufacturing and a range of other industrial and commercial services and operations. Uh, which was staff's determination uh both at the master plan and and zoning level for how to define uh the proposed use. Uh, this image depicts the zoning maps with conversion to our current development code uh zoning districts. Uh, as we have to kind of explain every time, uh, in twenty eighteen, county adopted our our current development code title fifteen. Uh, we replace the names of zoning districts and we have sort of a conversion document that we use uh to find the applicable zoning today. This case, uh, the subject parcel still has M one expired zoning district that converts to heavy industrial zoning. Uh, you can see that that salmon color uh extends out to the west so that it also includes the airport properties. Uh, to the east of the subject parcel, northeast is community commercial zone land. And then uh to the southeast or the southern side of the eastern uh parcel perimeter. Is a split zone property. Uh, it does include some residential zoning adjacent to the subject site. And then commercial uh community commercial zoning along Highway ninety-five A. Uh, looking through the development code, uh, we use the uh land use staples in chapter three twenty to determine what level of entitlement is appropriate. The described project uh of of breaking down uh solar panel materials. Does fall within the EPA definition of hazardous waste because the waste is actually universal waste. Which per the technical definitions would trigger uh the Lion County entitlement uh requirements for hazardous waste processing and hazardous waste storage. And I'll go into the details of their proposed use here in just a moment. Both again requiring conditional use permit. So this is the site plans provided by the applicant showing the outline of uh the proposed operations. Uh, notably, again, no expansion of buildings or impervious areas. Uh, all of the uses are proposed to incur in the the shop building and the production building. And then that big green box is the area proposed for outdoor storage of the solar panel materials and uh material stock. Um, the summary that I depicted here in the slide and it's also include. Included in the staff report is not the entire description. Uh, the applicant has multiple representatives here and I wouldn't endeavor to try and describe the technical process. So I'll certainly leave that to them if you do have questions about the process. Um, but in summary, the the beginning would of the process would be delivery by truck. Of palletized and shrink wrapped materials collected by third parties. Uh, as well as uh material stream that would be collected by uh other comstock. Facilities within the region delivered here, uh, stored inside and outside. The interior tenant improvements for the large building would mimic some of the work that was already done in the shop building for which they. The applicants did receive building permits to to install. Uh, some of the pictures are in the staff report and the applicant's middle. Uh, but they involve conveyor belts, uh ovens with solution vent controls in order to meet uh state federal standards for. Solution mitigation. And then a physical shredding and separation of the material. So we have the glass materials, the metal materials. Um, and then the photovoltaics uh separated out into to even to powders. Material streams themselves would then be separated for the appropriate state uh sanctioned uh storage and processing handling uh standards. Uh, and then the ultimate goal, of course, is to recover some of those photovoltaic materials from the end of life solar panels as well as reducing the overall volume uh to landfills. Uh, when staff reviews conditional use permits, we use again our development code, uh, chapter fifteen two thirty oh six. Includes the findings that staff uses to assess the impacts and propose conditions for mitigation of the use. Uh, rather than read through them all, of course, the details again in the staff report. I just wanted to call attention to to some of the uh, some of the summary points within those findings. Uh, notably, uh, the master plan designation and the zoning are consistent with the proposed use provided the CUP is obtained. Uh, the applicant is responsible for still attaining state and federal permits as appropriate for that use. Uh, Lion County Building Department would be looking for those uh materials to be included. As part of their building permit tenant improvement submittals. Um, additionally, if you look at the conditions of approval, uh, we've required a maintenance plan, a safety plan, and operations plan. Uh, those types of documents that while we're not experts in necessarily, uh, we do want to make sure we have them in on our files or in our files, I'm sorry. Before we start issuing tenant improvements and then ultimately even if they were working on some of those documents during the construction phase prior to uh certificate of occupancy of the larger building. We also included conditions of approval authorizing the Community Development Director to require items like a noise study if. Uh, there were complaints or uh for some reason the noise seems to be exceeding the allowed limits per our code and per the information that's been provided. So uh, at this point, we have also thrown in a condition to specifically address that uh item regarding sound. Uh, the same type of metric and process would be used uh for pollution control. If there were odor complaints, uh, the state permits do have standards uh for all of these qualities. And they are required to attain those permits from the state. And again, while Lion County is not an expert. Um, in in these matters, we don't have staff that we can consult in these matters. What we can do is require the applicants upon complaints. To uh collect these these studies, to to complete these studies and then show us that we have state approval. Um, of any kind of offensive uh determin- determination of something offensive due to the use. Uh, there is language about fencing. If you note that uh border with some of the residential zoning, uh, the map, I'm gonna just jump back to. Uh, to the right of the subject parcel, you see those areas in red. Uh, those master plan designations are commercial. But if we skip ahead to the zoning, there is that strip between the subject parcel and Highway ninety-five A that has residential zoning. Uh, Lion County Community Development is not aware of any residential development proposals to expand that area. However, if someone were to construct there and there were some complaints about the outdoor storage. Uh, while the site's already fenced or with a, I'm sorry, gated, the chain link fence, it doesn't provide the same type of screen and solid fence or wall would provide. So were those proposals come forward or were we to receive complaints? Uh, the Community Development Director would have the authority to then require it, which is why it's included as one of the conditions. Uh, stormwater management, uh, again, the, you know, we. Community Development Director earlier today did mention our stormwater management guidelines, our drainage guidelines. Uh, they weren't necessarily triggered here because there's no new buildings or pavement. However, my my final bullet point here does sort of address the outdoor storage component. Uh, were the state approvals to require some kind of secondary containment or something along those lines, we would sort of be reviewing their approvals. Um, but I did sort of want to mention it here because it is a bit of staff's concern. And even though we don't necessarily have a regulation to address it, I did want to make it part of the public record so that if there are issues in the future, um. The Community Development Director will have some authority to maybe put a hold on the use or or execute some other action. Uh, finally, after uh I. But after we did get the uh, the the report published, I spoke with uh Lion County Utilities Director Buceta. Uh, just about adding sort of a catch-all safety uh condition. So in addition to the recommended conditions of approval. Uh, staff is is recommending and requesting uh that there just be one more condition we can add on uh to the final approval letter. Uh, all sewer discharge shall meet requirements found title nine, chapters five and six to the Lion County Utilities Department. And that is addressing the effluent stream uh that has the potential to affect the um, the treatment plant. Uh, these standards would already be addressed in submittals to Lion County because the Utilities Department would address the site improvement, tenant improvement applications. Uh, however, we did just want to kind of address this explicitly. Uh, so with that, oh, and one last item, uh, the July eleven Planning Commission meeting. Uh, this was canceled. We had an error in the noticing and as a result, we were not able to hear this.
Sorry?
You mean June?
June eleven. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Uh, June eleven Planning Commission meeting uh was canceled. So we weren't able to attain a recommendation from the Planning Commission. However, in the packets is. Transmittal from the Silver Springs Citizens Advisory Board meeting and they were able to recommend a full approval uh to this board. The vote.
You're out of order.
The vote was approved. So with that, uh, I am available for any questions. And again, uh, the applicant has a number of representatives here. They have questions about the process.
Any questions?
I I do.
Oh.
Will there be any uh odor associated with this operation?
Again, I'll I'll defer to to the applicants on that. The app, the submittal materials include very technical language that I, again, I wouldn't guess to know. Uh, but they do have pollution controls and filters that are required by their, by the state for their process. I don't know if there's other questions for me and I could turn it over or whatever you'd like.
That's true. Anything further on that?
Um, just uh, thank you, Chairman Hock. They um. Just so the public hears the uh, most uh hours of operation.
Uh, we can include a condition for that. Again, I'll I'll let them defer to that. We do have uh in code some hours of operation. I. May openly admit that I missed including that in the conditions of approval. Um, but I would suggest maybe we have that discussion with the applicants. And then uh maybe in any kind of motion coming forward, that would be an appropriate condition to add. It's to to somehow limit or define.
Because of the residential nearby.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, we're talking about solar panels and stuff out in uh. Other parts of the county and stuff like that, solar fields and stuff. And we were, uh, the conversation has been coming up about the bonding. Uh, to on most projects.
Reclamation.
Yeah. And now, now that they come to this place, NDEP requires a bonding on them. But we we don't require a bonding.
Are we talking about solar panel fields, not this, not this?
I'm talking about this project and here's where I'm going with it. If no business goes under in the first few years that they're doing stuff, but it it's after that. And and if they're bringing in solar panels and then it gets left on the property, is there a. A bond to make sure that the county can remove them?
Oh, uh, I, no, I don't believe that's in this approval at all.
NDEP should have something of a bonding already. But my question would be if we do develop something there, I don't think we have one right now, but if we do, does that go back to them uh under the CUP or does? That does it grandfather them in?
Uh, I'm not sure how to answer that question, sir. I mean, this is sort of a conceptual, so I I'm not sure if I understood even your questions, Bill.
Okay, well, I can talk to you later about it. I I don't think it's going to impact this that much because of the way it's set up, but uh. Because and I know NDEP has bonding on there, so.
Well, but a case in point would be Solyndra where they left a warehouse full of. Stuff from solar panels.
Um, yeah, I think some of that might be handled within, I'm sorry, uh, Chair, Chair. I I think some of that would be handled between in the lease agreement between the property owners and the developer and operator of this project. Uh, that's not to say that. Couldn't add a recommended condition of approval.
I'm not looking to put anything on there. I was just wondering how the procedure works and I'll just talk to you.
Okay.
Anything further? Thank.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Uh, we do have a.
Might suggest the applicants.
Right, and that's what I was getting at. If the chair has. Should say the committee has anything further. Um. Uh, okay, so yeah, we'll have the uh applicant come up and uh see if there's any questions from the Commissioners on this.
Hello, my name is Fortunado Villamania. I'm president of the Comstock Metals. I can answer any questions. Um, maybe just before we start, you know, with some of the stuff that's come up. Um, these panels are exactly the same as the panels that sit on your roofs. There there's no difference. They're simply taken off the roof and brought to the facility. Um, in terms of uh hours of operation, our proposal is to ramp up to twenty-four seven uh operation at the facility. To reflect the volume of panels that's that's coming off um or being deinstalled. And uh, we are more than happy to comply with with the noise conditions that that are in the application. There actually isn't um any real noise that you notice outside the building and certainly not at the fence line, but happy to meet those requirements. NDEP does regulate stormwater. Um, and we currently have stormwater permit for the uh demo facility. And we will obviously get one for the large scale facility. Uh, we also uh at the demo facility have a current bonding for the panels within that. Uh, as long as we weren't double dipped, I have no objection to. Uh, to additional bonding. Uh, what I'd like it to reflect though is we're not going to be uh at full capacity date one. Uh, if we can look at it as a subsequent period as that capacity grows, that 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 would be helpful to the startup business. Um. So avoiding double dipping and and staging it as the panels can handle the, would be beneficial.
Questions, Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, just curious. What's the turnaround? And let's say you get semi truck of uh pallets full of these solar panels, which I'm sure you will. Um. What's the turnaround in getting those come crushed or whatever recycled down?
Yeah, um, look, when when the truck comes in, the facility is going to process twenty-five thousand pounds a day. So we can actually do a truck in in two days. The difficulty is, and the reason for storage is when a solar field goes offline. Those panels will come in as a large quantity to be worked off over a period of time. So so there's a requirement for a buffer. Not for residential or small scale industrial, but for utility scale applications, um, which can be several hundred thousand panels. Those will come in over a period of time as they're being uninstalled and they would be processed over a period of time. But they would come in a little faster than we could process them, so we need a buffer. The other thing I want to add is um, we got to a stage with the demonstration facility where one hundred point zero percent of that panel is now being recycled. Uh, we turn those into four distinct products. Uh, we have, we have commercial partners for those products, so we're selling them. Um, so there actually is an old portion of the panel uh going to land.
Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, uh, we've, we've toured the plant, the demonstration facility as it's actually working. And uh, I don't know to notice any noise outside the building or anything like that. No, no, nothing else. But uh, when people talk about hazardous waste, did you kind of tell us what the hazardous waste is that they're, you're removing?
Sure. The generically, the term hazardous waste applies to anything which contains heavy metals, toxic organic substances. People get this sort of image of drums leaking black goo somewhere. Uh, unfortunately, there really was never, or no one ever considered what solar panels were. So they were lumped into hazardous waste. Okay, they do have a special exemption as universal waste. Um, but they are exactly the same or treated the same as their television sets, as a computer, as uh uh a printer, uh just generic electronic waste. So um, and it is one type of material, the solar panels. So we're not going to bring in chemicals. We're not going to bring in uh heavy metals from somewhere. We're not going to bring in things that would leak. And in fact, our facility uses zero water. So we, we don't have a discharge situation. Uh, that was deliberately done. The panels are all solid state. Uh, they don't contain any liquids. Uh, we don't certainly add any liquids. Um, so it's, it's a fairly, fairly simple process. It's a hundred percent dry.
Go ahead.
And uh, also that no noise or anything like that, no smell coming from the plant. Once it's shut up, it's relatively no one pays attention to it. But the deliveries, can we work on something to receive the deliveries during normal hours instead of? Because I, I don't think we want trucks going up and down that past residential things twenty-four seven.
No, we, we've actually hired a recently uh customer liaison person. Uh, what uh, what that role is, is basically to coordinate with the customers. So if someone has a load of solar panels, they call that individual. Uh, they actually given the uh, uh, a delivery number which tracks the delivery through our whole process. Uh, they get a schedule for a delivery time and uh, and that delivery date. So we can certainly manage that.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you being here. Yeah, I, I personally don't have a problem with a twenty-four seven operation. Yeah, that's more jobs which we need. Uh, would, wouldn't mind seeing some limitation of delivery, so. That, that would make sense. And where are these panels coming from?
Um, the preponderance is coming from California. Okay, like uh, if you look at uh the rollout of panels since, since the early two thousands, um, what you look at is, is the early adopters, California takes the box. Uh, you look at the um, the scale of the adoption, California went far more into it than any other state. So if you look at the oldest panels out there, averaging twenty years or more, um, half of the US panels in that category are sitting in California. And so uh, for us as a company, being at the exit points in California, I eighty, I fifteen, I ten would be ideal. We take that volume and um, and that'll um, that would basically, or let me put it this way, uh, our own projections indicate that by twenty thirty, uh, there's going to be about a million tons of panels coming off service. The facility we're talking about will process a hundred thousand tons of panels. So it'll roughly be ten percent of the total volume coming off service. Okay, so we will actually need ten of these facilities. If we were to address the market by twenty thirty, that's only going to grow by twenty forty and twenty forty-five.
And that's why these industrial size solar farms really concern me. Um, however, I'm, I'm, don't mind importing all solar panels from California as long as the people stay there.
Uh, Commissioner Hendricks?
The, the recycled materials that are generated through this process, will those all be stored indoors?
Yeah, those are actually currently stored in uh, in trailers outside. Okay, but they're inside a trailer. Uh, that was a designation for NDEP. Uh, and that's, that's already on.
Okay.
Uh, on the plan for the uh, for the demonstration facility, we'll do the same thing.
Okay.
For a full-scale facility. And the plan is actually to ship them out as quickly as you can since we're selling them. So as soon as we have a couple of truckloads, they're going to roll out.
Commissioner Keller?
Just to follow up on where do the panels come from and stuff like that. A conversation that I had with you uh in the past is that, and we're looking at solar fields all over the state of Nevada, not necessarily in Lyon County because that's the big push of the administration and, and then land grab, but we're going through right now. But we were talking about in new solar fields, brand new ones, there's three percent of that that, up to three percent that is uh already going to be recycled because they break in in shipping to get there and then the construction people that would install them, break them.
Sequentially.
Oh, higher. Well, so there is going to be a demand in Nevada just right off the get go.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're talking about end of life. Um, what that means for us is based even on the numbers we've collected, um, half a percent get, get broken or destroyed simply during transportation. Either they get dropped, they get run over or something. Uh, roughly one percent uh by our estimates are destroyed during installation. Somebody drops a hammer through them, you know, walks on them. Um, and we have some customers that have claimed that number is as high as five percent. And then there's about a, over the life of the panel, a ten percent attrition rate while we're being cleaned. Again, somebody drops something on and the cleaning machine rips it up. Um, so there's, there's a, a sequential um withdrawal of the panels as they're damaged. And for us, that, that would be pretty simple. We do twenty-five thousand pounds a day. We could process them easily. It's the true end of life ones when they're coming off the racks that, that we require that buffer.
Anything further? Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment. I'm really glad that we have a facility that can recycle these things and not just have them all end up in the landfills. And it's pretty cool it's coming to Lyon County, so. Cool.
Just to make a pitch, uh, we've been proposing for a long time that any new panel project should have an end of life plan built into it. Um, because that would make sense if it would actually create an environment where we already know where they're going to go before they're, before they die.
Okay, thank you. We'll look at uh public comment. Nothing else. Thank you, sir. Seeing none, we will move on to a motion. Yeah, Commissioner Keller?
I'm moved to approve the conditional use permit request from Comstock Metals Corporation to operate an industrial scale facility for the recovery and processing, recycling of photo vaultake solar panels at six hundred Lake Avenue in Silver Springs. This will use, will include outdoor storage of solar panels, pre and post-processing of parcels subject to high S, heavy industrial suburban zoning, APN zero one five, one four two, one two and PLZ twenty twenty-four, O eight.
Do I have a second?
Based on, uh, based on the.
Yeah, on conditions, right.
Hang on one second.
Exactly. They're on it.
Based on the conditions of approval, one through twenty-one, twenty-one or twenty nineteen to include uh the sewer discharge and also hours of operation? Hours of delivery, excuse me.
Delivery, yeah. Operation twenty-four seven.
I'll send that.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to thirteen B. For possible action to approve a request for an extension of time until September thirty, twenty twenty-five to file the final maps of unit seventeen B eighteen of the River Park Residential subdivision located at Mark Twain and accessed by Fort Churchill Road. The tentative map approval for units sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen was approved on January seventh, twenty sixteen. APNs zero two nine dash seven three one dash zero nine and zero one six dash zero two two dash forty one, PLZ twenty twenty-four dash zero three zero. And we have a staff report on that?
All right, Gavin Henderson, Lyon County Community Development Director. Yep, this is just the request for an extension of time for uh River Park units twelve B and eighteen uh, this natural subdivision. And this was um, part of some undue circumstances uh that forced the applicant to hold off on reporting that. Everything is in process. We do have end up approval letters, um subdivision approval plan. So this is just an extension of time on the map.
Thank you. Any questions? Any public input? If not, we'll look for a motion on sixteen, or thirteen B.
Chairman, oh.
Okay, go ahead.
Chairman Hockley, I have moved to approve the, the request for an extension of time until uh September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five to file the final maps for units seventeen B and eighteen of the River Park Residential subdivision located in Mark Twain and accessed by Fort Churchill Road. Tendative map approval for units sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, which was approved on January seventh, two thousand sixteen, APNs zero two nine, seven three one, zero nine and zero one six, zero two two, four one, PLZ two thousand twenty-four, zero three zero.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Thank you. Hey, we're going to move on to Clerk Treasor's report. Fourteen A for possible action approved to canvass the vote from the twenty twenty-four primary election per NRS two ninety-three dot three eighty-seven. Stacey Lumberg.
Stacy Lumberg, Lyon County Clerk Treasurer. Um, we've had a quite an interesting month. Um, so I, I wanted to give, since you got everything a little late, I kind of wanted to break down the report a little bit because it did come in a late backup. But I kind of wanted to start the morning with a little humor, if you don't mind. Um, I was doing some election history research and I found a, a poem written um, of fifty-two to fifty-six. I had to modify it a little bit to prevent offending people at, at this day. But um, I'd like to start by reading that and then I'll go into my uh canvas. "The election is over. The result is known. The will of the people has been clearly shown. Let's forget our quarrels and show by our deeds that we will give our leader all the help he needs. Let's get together and let bitterness pass. I'll hug your elephant and you can kiss my donkey." So that might be a little fun in uh, in doing our canvas this morning, so.
I wouldn't change the language.
I, I looked at all that they, they tried to release it like in two thousand one and oh my gosh, at one of the universities, boy, everyone attacked them, you know? And it was like, oh no, I don't want them. So I thought it was kind of fun. It was very interesting and I enjoyed finding it, so I wanted to share. So um, on our elections, our pre-laps were done with no variances or discrepancies uh May fourteenth through the seventeenth. Um, our test decks ran and found accurate and our election went off pretty much without a hitch. Um, I would like to take a moment to thank everybody that makes elections work. And each time, I mean, I just, I'm blessed to have the people that assist me. Um, our facility, our facility department, um, oops. Our facility department handles all of our delivery and pickup of all of our election equipment. Our schools and community centers um provide us ser- secure pole locations. Our IT, amazing support and guidance, sometimes even before we know we need it. So I really, big shout out to them um and my staff. I mean, they're eating at their desks. They're working sixteen to twenty hours. They're just hardworking, no breaks, amazing people. I just, if you get a minute, stop by and thank them for all their hard work. Um, other county staff without requests offers to help and support without being asked. Uh, City of Fernley and, and Clerk Kim Swanson is very devoted and a huge assistance in the Fernley area for our pole locations. Um, the pole workers tire, work tirelessly to service our community and work long hours at our poles. And a big shout out to our VIPs. They, they've joined the last two elections for me and they've provided efficient, reliable, wonderful election support. And I just, I can't thank them enough. As well as our sheriff's office, Brad was uh good in supporting our needs and, and putting officers there when we needed them. Um, so I just, I feel really blessed and I think that's why we were so successful during this election. Um, we had a very low turnout of voters, um, roughly around ninety, ninety-eight hundred. Um, we had sixty-eight, nineteen mail ballots and we only had twenty-nine, eighty actually show up in person to vote. So it looks like our counting is going to the paper ballots with drop offs. Um, and I'll get you a report on that. I know um, some of the um, like Robyn Titus is one is looking at, she really wants some numbers on where they mailed or where they dropped off. And the drop off is huge. Um, a lot of people, there's not a lot of confidence, confidence in, in the mail at this time, especially with them moving the facility. And I, I really appreciate everyone working together to get the word out. Yeah, if you want to use that paper ballot, please bring it back. You know, we have all these locations. Please drop it off. Um, we had forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two active registered voters that didn't come. So I, I'm not sure why we're looking at that and uh, or looking at that high end number, but I'm hoping we can do something with the general. We have some really um aggressive notices that we'll be sending out to try to get um, the voter rolls cleaned up in the next week or so because we have only a, about a forty day window before the blackout period for the general. So um, we have uh two thousand thirty-nine ballots returned with forwarding addresses. So we're just not getting people to keep them current and updated. So I'm hoping we, you know, with our efforts, we can lower those, that number and improve our turnout. Um, let's see. Um, one big thing, we've added some new processes. We've added some in-office help from our pole workers. Um, we've done some extensive, uh, we've added some extra proofing um of our BB PAT roles, which are the roles that come out of the election machines. Um, we're required to do four. We've done six. We've found no discrepancies. Um, and then I just wanted to thank you for your time and see if you have any questions on that.
Let's see. Commissioner Jacobson?
Um, I guess I missed the window early on Commissioner comments, but I thought it was appropriate here to congratulate Ms. Hendricks.
Thank you.
And uh, with that, um, so those ballots that are returned, are those put into the system where they are no longer able to vote during the general in November?
No, we are not allowed to do that by law. Um, what we are doing though is we are sending a postcard which should go out by the first of July. And that will allow us to at least, if they're not, if they don't reply to that postcard, we can mark them an active. So we're not sending ballots to that address or to that voter. They actually have to either cancel the registration or not vote in two federal elections in order for us to remove them from the polls, from the rolls.
So you send the postcard to the same address that got sent back?
But it's forwarded because election mail cannot be forwarded. So these, as we hit, they're not there. It comes back to us. But it's forwarded because election mail cannot be forwarded. So these, okay, they're not there, it comes back to us. So this postcard is forwardable. And the state is also sending out all of our forwards, they're sending out another one to the USPS address that they have on site or on file, but we can't.
And then my other question is, is there a system in place that if they're registered to vote in another area, does that automatically withdraw them from this or is?
Yes, we have a duplicate report that we work on daily. And it shows every, it it uh comes from the state and it tells the last registration for them. So if their registration is newer in Douglas County. Then in Lion County, we can delete them.
Okay, thank you. Good job and uh tell you, I'll swing by and tell your troops thanks too.
Thank you.
Thanks, River.
Well, I I think uh come to general, I think you're in for a a big turnout. Might, but there's gonna be a lot of stuff on there, so I'm glad to see you survived this one as a test run and you did a good job and thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I just want to thank her. I know she wasn't feeling well during the whole process and she. Just pushed through and we appreciate all the work from you and your staff and everybody else that contributed.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work. Appreciate it.
I do have a question.
Oh, a question, go ahead.
Sorry, um, I just thought of it. Uh, thank you, Mr. So. The the two elections, the 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 special elections that you're gonna have to hold for the the improper ballots. Are we gonna have to come back and do that again for those two elections?
Well, we only have to do one election uh for clarification. It's on July twenty third. And we will have to, we do have uh two days of early voting on election day and we do have to canvass it as this one, yes.
Just just curious.
Okay. Any public input on this? Seeing none, we have to approve the canvas. We have a motion.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the canvas, the vote from the twenty twenty four primary election per NRS two ninety three dot three eight seven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Hey, um, county manager is not going to be having any report. Um. That was a BDR for the first item fifteen A, which is a ongoing item. And fifteen B for possible action appoint Jerry Colwell as chairman for the first meeting of the Central Lion Vector Control Board. So. We have anything on fifteen A at all for possible action since we have no report on that? Any public input on that? And I would say we'll just continue that on to the next agenda as requested in the past.
Um, Chairman Hockley, well, is this appointment necessary before the next time we meet? I know we're not meeting July fourth, so. Um, is this some, is this one we could take action on? That's my question.
That's what I was looking at for fifteen B is I think we probably should take action not, um. Yes, Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that we're done with fifteen A before we went to fifteen B.
Yeah, I'd say let's just move it forward.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um, so just to give you a quick update, um, since Tony Anderson, the prior um chairman of that board passed away. And they did not had voted in any other members such as a vice chair or secretary. So. At this time, we've been working with their board to get them up and functional and trained again so that they can start meeting. So Andrew did go over and meet with them and kind of give them um. A packet that I gave to him and then some training materials. Um, so the chairman will be working with me until the first meeting so that they can meet and actually appoint their own chairman and the other. Um, vice chairs, secretaries, they get back to functioning.
That's right. Public participation, correct?
On fifteen A, are we?
No, B.
Next one, fifteen B, um, we're at basically Commissioner. I'll go into public comment here in a moment, but uh it is an action that needs to be accomplished, so. That's why I think we should uh. Fulfill the Commissioner comments here and then I'll go into public comment. And none there, then we will look for a motion on fifteen B.
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion to appoint Jerry Colwell as chairman for the first meeting of the Central Lion Vector Control Board.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, Jerry Colwell is appointed chairman. District Attorney sixteen A for possible action approve hiring Deputy District Attorney Level Two, DDA Two at an advanced pay rate with additional salary and benefits that comes from. Contingency and amount not to exceed thirty two thousand five hundred for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Mister Foley.
Josh Foley, Lion County Council for the record. Steve Rye asked if I could represent him since he's has some other things he has to accomplish. Because he is short-staffed, according to the. Uh, with that being said, he does have a person that he's made a job offer to contingent upon approval today by the board. I would recommend the approval. This position has been vacant for a number of years. Uh, we're still, even after this, with still vacant an additional uh district attorney positions. That's the reason for recommendation.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. So the the um thirty two thousand five hundred. Does that come out next year's budget or this year's?
Next year.
Okay, and then this is another comment I've never heard of a CPA slash JD before.
Anything further? No? Any public input? Then I'll look for a motion on sixteen A.
Chairman Hockley, I'll make a motion to approve hiring the Deputy District Attorney Two. Uh, DDA Two at an advanced pay rate with the additional salary and benefits to come from contingency and an amount not to exceed thirty two thousand five hundred dollars for the fiscal year two thousand twenty five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Human Services. Seventeen A for possible action accept the electronic file cabinet, additional storage service agreement between Lion County Human Services and foothold technology not to exceed a prorated. Amount of two hundred and fifty in the first year, six hundred and eighteen in the second year, and additional three percent each year thereafter funded through the opioid litigation funding. Strategy and to authorize the county manager to sign. This doctor.
Morning, Doctor Shabel Holmes, Lion County Human Services for the record. Uh, this request is to increase the storage size as noted for the database that we have implemented at the Human Services Department to be able to better track folks coming into the. Department and maintain their records electronically. Um, turns out the. File storage available through our base rate was not enough. Uh, some things we just didn't anticipate going into it, so my staff have begged for their ability to be able to upload and what it is, is that's a. Electronic filing cabinet, so they're able to just upload things directly and not have to maintain a paper file and an electronic file. So it saves my staff a lot of grief by not having to maintain both. And we believe that it is a small enough amount that we can cover it within our current budget. Um, and if it makes staff life easier, it's worth it.
Missioners, any questions, comments? Any public input? If not, we'll look for a motion on seventeen A.
I move that we accept the electronic file cabinet additional storage service agreement between Lion County. Human Services and foothold technology. Not to exceed a prorated amount of two fifty in the first year and six hundred and eighteen dollars in the second year. And an additional three percent each year thereafter funded through the opioid litigation funding strategy and to authorize the county manager to sign.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Seventeen B for possible action accept grant award from the State and Nevada Department of Sentencing Policy for fiscal year twenty five Nevada Local Justice. Reinvestment Grant Re- Reentry Support Program. In the amount of a hundred and fifty three thousand eight hundred and eighty four dollars with a match of a forty six thousand seventy six dollars. You're on again.
So we're excited about this grant opportunity. Um, what will be utilizing it for us to contact with. Uh, a local nonprofit to be able to provide what we call certified peer support specialists. They are actually written into the Nevada GRI statute as a certified. Uh, lower level professional and what our goal with this is, is to be able to expand our forensic assessment services triage team, the FAST team, which works on reentry services from the jail. So what will happen is one of these certified peers will be assigned to individuals upon release to help them. With service connection and working on their service plan in hopes that having that peer to be able to walk them through the process and keep tabs on them. Post uh post their stay in the county jail, that they'll actually be successful in their service plan and have a less ra- rate of recidivism.
Okay, missionaries. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you. Uh, uh, is this support mandated? Uh, does the person being released have to take advantage of this?
Absolutely not. All the services are voluntary, including the forensic assessment services triage team. So it's an individual that's wanting to change their life and put a wrench in our continuing cycle of in and out of the the jail. And so um. Having a peer assigned to them is also voluntary and all voluntary engagement. But having a peer that's been through the process before and through substance misuse treatment centers before, been through behavior health before. Um, research shows that having that level of professional tied to them shows better outcomes.
Yes, Commissioner Keller.
So as we move forward with this, you're gonna uh be able to report back uh uh the recidivism of those people so we can see what it. Does for our, help our sheriff's department, court system and the rest of this stuff.
Absolutely. Yep, we'll be able to, we do track our individuals that come in through FAST and their recidivism rates. Um, identifying recidivism is actually something that's up on a potential BDR request because it's not defined by the state. So right now. Locally, we define it as coming back into jail custody within two years. Um, but if the state ever agrees on a actual definition of recidivism, we might alter that, but right now that's what we'd be able to report on.
Hmm. Anything further, Commissioner Keller? Now, I've been around this since seventy three. It's pretty simple about recidivist rate, but uh. I guess they have to get a little complicated on that. If you show up again, you're recidivist. Hmm.
But for how long?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Definitely is hard.
Uh, still, if you come back, you're recidivist. That's all there is to it. Yeah, I don't care if it's two years or ten years, you came back.
Right.
Okay, any other questions up here? Any public input? Then I'll look for a motion on seventeen B.
Chairman Hockley, I move uh to accept the grant award from this uh Nevada Department of Sentencing Policy for fiscal year two thousand twenty five Nevada Local Justice. Reinvestment Grant Reentry Support Program in the amount of one hundred fifty three thousand dollar, uh, one hundred fifty three thousand eight hundred forty four dollars with a match of forty six thousand seventy six dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, so one seventeen C for possible action. Retroactively approve a contract between Lion County and S T Huerta Four Square Clinicals effective November first, two thousand twenty three in amount not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred to provide medical services and oversight to individuals receiving professionally identified prescription medication needs with the mobile outreach safety. Pro team most.
For this item in our last. Mobile Outreach Safety Team Grant through the state and then it's also duly funded through the Attorney General's Office because that grant, I could not tell you what all those initials mean right now. Um, what we were able to do is expand that program to have a psychiatric APRN be able to provide services to individuals that need. Medical stabilization, individuals with severe mental illness to have somebody come out to them because many times going into the doctor's office. Transportation symptoms, whatever it may be, is a barrier for individuals experiencing severe mental illness to be able to get these services. So. We were very lucky that Four Square Clinicals is interested in providing services to the rules. Interested in being able to go out onsite. This includes individuals living homeless with severe mental illness. And be able to provide antipsychotics to them where they're at, which helps prevent future crisis, future most calls, future. Uh, trips to jail and or the hospital. The only thing is, is that I I believe it was because of staffing turnover at the time that we were implementing this new piece. However, we put them to work and we failed to bring the contract in front of you guys. So it's been signed for quite some time by the contractor, but it has not been signed by you, Chair. So we are bringing that to you to have you. Uh, approve retroactively.
And that was one of my questions is, well, that's an interesting one, retroactive back to November. Yeah, uh, thank you for explaining that. Anything further, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just kind of wondering how you were able to provide the services if it hadn't been before us.
Well, the contractor signed the contract. It was an error in not bringing it to you. Clearly, we were not aware that we hadn't brought it to you. Um, so we, he continued to do the services, he continued to invoice us. We had it approved via the grant budget and when it came to our attention that we hadn't had it approved through the BOCC, we reached out immediately and got it on the agenda. It was a significant error.
I don't like retro- retroactive contracts.
Yeah.
Now, this was uh Chairman, this was with the grant money, so.
Correct.
I'm.
Commissioner Keller.
So how how much do we use this? I mean, as far as uh, how many people use this?
Uh, well, it's a pretty small contract, so fourteen thousand four hundred is for the total for the year. We utilize him about ten hours a month. It's very minimal.
Do you see it need more or is it because we only have that much money?
Well, it's the first year we've done it, so we were piloting it and we were really uncertain how many individuals were going to engage because it is voluntary like all of our others. Uh, we have maxed out his time, so we are absolutely utilizing him in our next grant cycle. If there's an opportunity to be able to increase that line item, we will most definitely be looking to do that.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I'd say with antipsychotics and things such as that, you are really need to uh keep track of those individuals. Appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Just just a comment, you know. You get a, you get a lot of grants for us and stuff, but everybody's got to remember grants aren't free. It's really a discretionary allocation of tax revenue.
Yeah.
So. Money that just fall out of the sky.
But as much of it that we can bring into our community, then our community is able to benefit. Those allocations are made. And those taxes are collected and if we're able to provide support to our community through them, I think that, you know, in areas where it's applicable, it's it's definitely helpful.
But it also brings about dependency on the grantor. And the federal government's used grants to try to take over this country for decades.
Uh, anything further? Public input? And if that's the case, then on seventeen C, we'll look for a motion.
Move that we retroactively approve a contract between Lion County and S T Huerta Four Square. Clinicals effective November first, twenty twenty three in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred dollars to provide. Medical services and oversight to individuals receiving professionally identified prescription medication needs with the mobile outreach safety teams.
Second.
There's Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Jacobson. So motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So we have a nay by Commissioner Henderson. Let me mon- write that down. Thank you. Motion passes four one. Um. Kind of looking at quite a few items left if we want to take a break for lunch for an hour. Because I don't believe we can be done before one o'clock.
I've been practicing my album in the chipmunks field.
Well, just, we appreciate that, but uh let's, let's take a break for lunch until one o'clock. So we'll reconvene at one o'clock today. And it's eleven fifty four. Take an hour and five. Clock and. Lunch. So we'll get the recording going here and I. Don't see the controller, so I believe we might go to nineteen A utilities.
Let's just turn that on the stuff.
Yeah. All right, nineteen A for possible action approve the removal of three water tankers, item number seven two two nine nine eight dash one. Seven two two nine nine eight dash two and nine two zero zero six zero. From the surplus equipment list that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on March seventh, twenty twenty four. so that they can be used to support the city of Yarrington's water emergency. Yes, sir.
Chairman Commissioners, David Wiegand for the record. So at the contingent, at the, uh, the auction for surplus, we put our three probable water tankers, you know, on the surplus item. But due to the nature of what's happening, you know, with the city of Yarrington, we're recommending that those come back off the surplus list. Then we'll get them recertified as probable water takers, you know, in case we needed to use them. So this is just a request to pull off surpluses.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners?
Straightforward.
I just, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, for the record, I think it's great that we use this, you're doing that and, uh, help them out because, uh, there could be some stressful times coming this way. So that's, that's a great call. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Keller, anything? Yeah, it's good, good planning you had on this and making sure we've got the assets that we need. So any public input? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on nineteen A.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve the removal of three water tankers, item number seven two two nine nine eight one, seven two two nine nine eight two and nine two zero zero six zero from the surplus equipment list that was approved by the Board of Commissioners on March seventh, two thousand twenty-four, so they can be used to support the city of Yarrington's water emergency.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll proceed getting those tankers going. And now that we have our latecomer. You know me, it, it, when it's time, it starts.
It's time.
It's time. So
I like that too.
Eighteen comptroller, eighteen A for possible action, approve policy two dash eight allocation of investment income, which addresses the method of allocating net investment income between funds.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, this formalizes what we've been doing. There was an investment policy I'm aware of for many years prior to my tenure at the county, but I haven't seen it in a long time. So I'm like, it's probably time to bring it to the board and just get everything formalized again. Uh, the only change from what we're currently doing to what we would be doing is instead of doing quarterly, we begin.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Any public input? Motion on eighteen A.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve policy two dash eight allocation of investment, investment income, which addresses the method of allocating net investment income between funds.
And I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Eighteen B for possible action, approve the master salary tables for fiscal years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, which includes an across-the-board five percent increase as well as renaming the previous A three pay grade to A four and the previous A four pay grade to A five, along with any current associated non-association positions and the creation of a new A three pay range and approve the reallocation of the district and justice court clerk. One position to a newly created A three pay range and the chief deputy juvenile probation officer to the M three pay range with a ten percent salary increase upon reallocation effective July sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, so pay ranges, you've already gone for the association positions. This would make our master for the county and non, uh, non-employee association match. And then it also takes the positions that are out of market in their current, uh, pay ranges and reallocate them to to, uh, market pay ranges similar to what we did with the association.
Any questions? And any public input? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion on eighteen. Oh, yes, go ahead.
I did give you an updated, uh, salary table this morning because the L five pay range was not accurate. And I gave you the new advice because it didn't give a five percent increase to the, what the existence of, so now it goes.
Any questions on that? Other input on that additional info? Seeing none. And I will look for a motion.
A move that we approve the master salary tables for fiscal years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, which includes an across-the-board five percent increase as well as renaming the previous A three pay range to A four and the previous A four pay range to A five, along with any currently associated non-association positions and the creation of a new A three pay range and approve the reallocation of the district and justice court clerk one positions to a newly created A three pay range and the chief deputy juvenile probation officer to the M three pay range with a ten percent salary increase upon reallocation effective July sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eighteen C for possible action, approve a revised Lyon County Personnel Policy effective July first, two thousand twenty-four.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, this will make a couple of changes to make the Lyon County Employees Association Policy and the personnel policy match. Those two changes are formally putting Juneteenth into the policy, which is, has been added to state law, so we're just mimicking that change. And increasing the max sickly buyout upon retirement, increasing each tier by two thousand. All of this has been mentioned.
Any questions from commissioners? Any public input? Seeing none, I need a motion on eighteen C.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve a revised Lyon County Personnel Policy effective July first, two thousand twenty-four with those two aforementioned changes.
Second by Commissioner Hendricks. A motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eighteen D for possible action, approve the management pay plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, just for the record, so everyone knows, we should have a new HR director starting July first. So we're excited. I'm really excited. The rest of you can be excited with me. Uh, so that'd be handling these, handling these going forward, but this just gives the same percentage increase that you just gave to the other employees and to the employees, so Lyon County Employees Association of five percent, plus two point five, three percent this year twenty-six, and yes, has been budgeted.
Okay, any permission comments? Questions? Public input? Seeing none. And I will ask for a motion.
The management pay plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Second. Second.
Oh, we got a second already. Sorry, I'm behind a bit. A motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. All right, eighteen E for possible action. Approve the fee resolution for all Lyon County departments effectively July first, two thousand twenty-four.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, this is, uh, we usually try and bring these to you at least annually. The changes minimal this year, retorters office, uh, because they're not giving CDs out anymore, they're either giving flash drives, sending my emails. They asked if that language we changed, also because the ordinance that got passed increased in the recording fee by three dollars. Just reflect that in here. And then Human Services requested that we increase the cost for senior center commercial kitchen rentals based on, since the last time we said it, what the actual fee is for a pair of employees to be there. And so it's approximately seventy-five dollars per hour, which includes salaries and benefits for the time. Those are all the changes.
All right. Do I have a, uh, any questions from the commissioners? You do. Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mister Chair. Two questions. Could you put it a little smaller? I mean, that's really, really hard to read.
It's hard to get it all on page. I could put it. I could make it smaller if you really wanted.
A- a- and then the other comment I have, and, and we're not going to get into it now, but I think, you know, we'll have a conversation to i- identify fees that are charged by one department, but are being used for something else, such as the recorder's fee that we just increased for three dollars. So be prepared for that. That's coming down the road. That's all I have, Mister Chair.
Anything further? Any public input? Okay, motion on eighteen E.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve a free fee resolution for all Lyon County Departments effective July one, two thousand twenty-four.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving to the bottom of the page, an eighteen F for possible action, approve a resolution certifying and levying tax rates in Lyon County for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year contingent upon approval by the Nevada Tax Commission.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, this is a requirement, so by statute, for the board to look at all of the different tax rates and actually formally certify and levy those tax rates. These are the ones that went into all the different budgets that were approved by, I can comment, I'm sure.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Jake.
I was, when I was looking through this, I was curious. I would say that we've done a fairly conservative job of even attempting to raise any taxes in the past few years. Have other counties inquiry? I, I, I don't follow other counties as closely as I maybe should. How are we stacking up with other counties and that?
So off the top of my head, a significant number of them are at the tax cap, and we add all the combined taxing rates and the
Right.
highest district, they're at three sixty-six, and they can't raise tax rates. We're one of those counties, so we're I would, off the top of my head, I'm thinking there's probably nine or ten that are in that, that situation. Some of the others aren't there, such as Eureka County would be an example. They have a low tax rate because they get such high revenue per capita for the mines and things like that in the area, so.
So we're basically tapped. Yeah.
Yeah, for, for a number of years now, we've been.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public input? Seeing none, and I'll look for a motion on eighteen F. When everybody jumped in.
I'm making a motion to approve resolution certifying and leveling, levying tax rates in Lyon County for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year contingent upon the approval by the Nevada Tax Commission.
Second.
Right? So, um, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes five zero. Eighteen G for possible action, adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four from various line items, including contingency within the general fund, the road fund, and the fair and rodeo fund is authorized by NRS three fifty-four, that five nine eight zero zero five.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, the vast majorities have come before the board previously this year and been approved. Um, I did put those in for you, and there are a handful of them that haven't been to the board yet. And I just do a single resolution within the year, so it's all summarized, if anything else, no what we're not a contingency during the year. It's, I am here to answer any questions you may have on any of those items.
Questions? Public input? Motion for eighteen G.
Move to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four from various line items, including contingency within the general fund, the road fund, and the fair and rodeo fund is authorized by NRS three five four point five nine eight zero zero five.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, moving on to eighteen H for possible action. Approve a one-year agreement starting July first, two thousand twenty-four with Walther Law Offices P L L C to serve as Lyon County's primary juvenile public defender in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, as you're aware, we took a single contract with Walther Law Offices to do everything public defender wise in Lyon County over the conflict cases. Split it into four contracts, one for each justice court and one for juvenile. This is the juvenile piece, and it was budgeted. We do get reimbursed most of these costs from the state's Department of Defense and Defense Services as well.
Questions from the commissioners? Public input? Seeing none, I will look for a motion on eighteen H.
Move to approve a three-year agreement starting oh, that's one year. Uh, approve a one-year agreement starting July first, two thousand twenty-four with Walther Law Offices P L L C to serve as Lyon County's primary juvenile public defenders in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eighteen I for possible action, approve a three-year agreement starting July first, two thousand twenty-four with Brock Law LTD to serve as one of Lyon County's primary public defenders with primary responsibility in the Dayton Justice Court in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, again, this is, uh, in regards to that breakup of the splitting the work out to different firms, and this is a lump for the Dayton Justice Court. It's budgeted, and we anticipate substantial reimbursement from the state on this class as well.
Commissioner, questions? Comments, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mister Chair. This is just for adults, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's confusing because you had juveniles in there. I get confused these.
Anything further? Public input? Motion for eighteen I.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve a three-year agreement starting July first, two thousand twenty-four with Brock Law Limited to serve as one of Lyon County's primary public defenders with primary responsibility in the Dayton Justice Court in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year.
Second. Got what?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Keller. So a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eighteen J for possible action, approve the First Amendment to the Indigent Defense Conflict Council Agreement with Edgerton Legal LLC.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, the current contract with Edgerton Legal LLC is that they get the first it's actually second shot at conflict council when Walther Law Offices conflicts out. This is just changing it so that it reflects the new setup. And they give, they are still aligned with conflict council after those points that were previously.
Questions? No, public input? And I'll make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Indigent Defense Conflict Council Agreement with Edgerton Legal LLC. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eighteen K, your final item. Approve a three-year agreement with SADA, S A D A Systems LLC for Google Workspace and Email Services in the amount of seventy-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars per year effective July fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, so this is mostly for email services, the county's email system. However, when we priced out an annual renewal for them, because we've been doing one-year renewals, it was more than the annual amount of a three-year renewal, plus a three-year renewal locks in that same rate for three years consecutively, instead of raising it as you go along. So we are recommending a three-year contract.
Okay. Any commissioners have comments? Public input? Motion.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the three-year agreement with S A D A Systems LLC for Google Workspace and Email Services in the for Google Workspace and Email Services in the amount of seventy-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars per year effective July fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And we've already got nineteen A out of the way. So we're going to recess to reconvene as Silver Springs General Improvement District. B O A R. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Item twenty-one. Contracts, twenty-one A for possible action, approve a contract with Atkins Realist for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for engineering services related to affluent disposal at the Silver Springs Airport and affluent disinfection and filtration at the Silver Springs G I D Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, David Riquetta for the record. So this board allocated three hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding to be able to work with affluent side of things out there at the Silver Springs G I D Waste Water Plant. We've primarily been focusing on disposal, affluent disposal, we're working with Dowell to come up, develop what's called a P E R preliminary engineering report. I gave an update a couple of months ago about the progress of that. And so this is moving into the next phase of that, which for us is looking at some of the capacities of the current conditions that we have. So one of our disposal sites is the Silver Springs Airport. In fact, that's our summer disposal site where they grow grass and then they have groundwater percolation. So that's out at the airport. One of the elements of this is to look at the geotech work associated with, with the groundwater percolation. So going back to some history, when that plant was built, it wasn't under the control of Lyon County, it was a private operation. And so when they built that swale, the swale was actually built with no geo, with no geotech work. It was done as an emergency type operation, what they put in. And so this year, when the subcontractor to the Silver Springs Airport let their grass dry up, it raised very large concerns to us about having an affluent disposal site. So we want to be able to go back and look at the geotech work to say, can that swale even take the amount of water that we have the potential to put there? So there's some complications with working out there, but we're working with the Silver Springs Airport, the LLC that runs the airport. And we want to make sure that we don't conflict with any of their master planning, because it's under the FAA control. There's a whole list of NEPA requirements that need to be done before you can even get involved in doing anything with the groundwork. So there, this isn't going to be a quick process to go through. If, so when we were, let me step back for a minute, when we were allocated the three hundred thousand dollars, we had to spend more money looking for alternate disposal sites with Dowell. So we ended up evaluating four or five sites, so that caused an additional encumbrance of some money. So there's more work that needs to be done, but within the three hundred thousand dollar window, we have an alternative, and that is the affluent law, affluent filtration system. So you know, before we put it anywhere, we have to clean it up. It runs through a two-part process at the treatment plant. You know, now it's about twenty-four years old and showing its age, so we need some evaluation to make sure that it keeps running at an optimal process so that we can continue to meet our affluent requirements from the state. That's listed as an option because all this, the ARPA money isn't enough to cover all of these, so that would be one of our proposed alternatives. If we ran into problems, say with a NEPA review or working with the Silver Springs Airport, you know, we can still go to this other component that's affluent related. The other task item associated with this is to complete that preliminary engineering report. You know, I mentioned Dowell looked at five different sites. That was in draft form. It was issued in January this year. We do need to complete this so that we have a full complement of, look, what are our disposal options out there at the G I D? And then by putting it under this P E R format, it opens us up for some potential future grants. So we want to get it into that, that format, just in case for a future grant that we could take advantage of. And then the last task associated with this is looking at the the disinfection system. So again, prior to going to the disposal site, we currently disinfect with bleach. It's a concentrated bleach called sodium methyl chloride. And again, it's the equipment associated, it's about twenty-four years old, starting to show its age. So we want to bring in Atkins to be able to do a condition assessment of it. We know that we're going to have to be making some improvements to it, but this will give us a list to help develop our future capital improvement plans. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you can have.
Questions? Okay, any public input? Seeing none, I will take a motion on twenty-one A.
A move that we approve a contract with Atkins Realist for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for engineering services related to affluent disposal at the Silver Springs Airport and affluent disinfection and filtration at the Silver Springs G I D Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, moving on to twenty-one D for possible action, approve a contract with Atkins Realist for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars for engineering services related to sludge pond cleaning and dewatering at the Silver Springs General Improvement District Waste Water Plant.
David Riquetta for the record. So for next fiscal, starting this fiscal year, we budgeted for sludge removal out of that plant. Currently, the process is the sludge in the wastewater is treated in two sludge ponds out there. And each sludge pond goes into a holding basin. You know, it's capped with affluent, and then over a period of time, it degrades in a a non-oxygen environment. And then every so often, you have to clean them. Ideally, you know, you want to clean these about every five years. We're going on about seven or eight years, and they're, they're basically at capacity, so we need to get rid of them. Get rid of the sludge in it. And so there's a process we go through. So we do have a budgeted for next year, but there is a significant expense to doing this. So one of the things we've asked Atkins to do is come in and say, hey, are there other options that we can use besides this, we call it mechanical dewatering, to, to get, to get the water out of the solids? Are there other options that we can do that may be more cost feasible, instead of every ten years having to spend a significant amount of money, you know, allocate money every year and help reduce costs? And we went out and took a look at more remote applications. Douglas County uses a thing called a geosynthetic tube. It's definitely not for every treatment plant, but for more rural treatment plants, I think it's a good application. So that holds promise that we can help optimize efficiency with the dollars and look at something that doesn't happen every, you know, five to ten years. So we're asking Atkins to come in and do a feasibility analysis of it and see, is this something that, you know, we can implement in Lyon County out of that plant to help ultimately reduce costs? So we are budgeted for next year, and to do the mechanical dewatering, we're hoping to get this report in and say, hey, would it be beneficial? But if, if it turns out it's not, you know, we'll be doing the other sludge pond probably within the next three years, in all those hats. So with that, I'd be happy to be answering any questions you have.
Questions? So we're looking at forty-eight thousand dollars to just do a study on systems that may already be working out there?
No, that they're not working out there that we don't currently have implemented. Douglas County has one of these systems implemented.
Well, that's what I mean. You've got other counties that might be using it?
Yeah, and Douglas, Douglas is, so we're seeing that it's a similar technology that may be used. There is infrastructure costs that would have to be associated with it, so we're having them put this together to say, what are the pros and cons with doing this? What kind of costs are associated?
Get an advantage for one way or the other, based on what they're doing?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and that's the study?
That's the study.
All right, I'm just wondering if you could see a result already from a different, you know, Douglas County or another county, why you'd have to do a study to decide that their results are better than ours?
Well, and the reason is because one, sludge is different from plant to plant. There's different characteristics of it. Two, there's different requirements. When we go to use, if we were to use these geosynthetic tubes to be able to do this, this dewatering process, it has different land requirements, and we may or may not, it may not be cost feasible for us to even implement it, because it does involve pumping, it does involve polymers. So it's not just a simple little process. So that's why we'll need someone to come in with the technical expertise who's done these and who's used these to say, does this make sense for Lyon County?
Okay. Chairman? Yeah, Commissioner Keller.
So how long has Douglas been doing it?
Um, I'm not sure the exact year they put it in, but I would say at least two to three years they've had theirs implemented.
Don't, no problems, you know?
No, no problem, no problem so far. Now, because Atkins is a very large engineering firm, you know, part of this is analysis, not just to look at Douglas County, what Douglas County did. We staff went there and took a look at what they were doing, but there's other small entities throughout Nevada and or throughout, you know, different states that may use this technology. So that's what they're going to bring in their expertise to not just look at one application, but multiple applications.
Anything else, Commissioner Keller?
No.
Anything? All right, any public input? And I'll look for a motion on twenty-one B.
A move to approve a contract with Atkins Realist for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars for engineering services related to sludge pond cleaning and dewatering at the Silver Springs General Improvement District's Waste Water Plant.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So for the record, though, that was Commissioner Hendricks with the motion, and Commissioner Hockaday with a second. Okay, final part, public participation for the General Improvement District. Anybody wishing to make a statement, you have three minutes, please come forward and be recognized. Any public input from Zoom or in the house? Seeing none, we will move on and adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Board of Commissioners. Twenty-three, agenda requests. Let's start with Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Henderson?
No, sir.
Commissioner Keller?
I don't have one drawn up for it, but my request is actually going to go to the planning department. I mean, planning commission, because I want them to do the feasibility on motel rooms combined with how many slot machines they put in for the drinking. And they had something like that on their agenda, but I'm going to try to do a little bit better. So I'll go with the county manager and see if we can come up with something.
Yep. Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I don't know the flavor of, of my fellow board here, but I think it's getting close again to a presentation from Waste Management and progress towards their responsibilities promised during the franchise agreement. And so I, I would like to hear quarterly from them. Just because it seems like prior to that franchise agreement, when we were getting different bids, the board took it on the chin a bunch by and maybe we didn't, but holding them to the to the grindstone on, on their commitment. So if I would like to hear from them again to see where we're at and, you know, whether there's excuses on land this or lying that or whatever, I, I think we need to hear from them regularly. So I'd like for them to be invited to the second meeting in July or the first meeting in August.
Very good. Commissioner Keller?
I'd like to add to that. I would like to see a progress on the transfer station in Silver Springs that we've been waiting thirteen years for.
That's the main one on mine, so.
Okay, excellent agenda request on that one. Anything further? Then we will move on to our final commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Keller.
We have none at this time.
Ah, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to little sad news that I wanted to report, but you know, we lost a great American this week in Willie Mays. And that man was amazing, not only on the ball field, but what he did off the ball field. So I just wanted to mention that. That's all.
Commissioner Hendricks?
No, he's this time.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, thank you. I, I head down here. I want to thank all those high school graduates that are going into the military. It's there's fewer and fewer kids going into that, into the branches of the military. And I want to thank those kids for stepping up for maybe it's for their future, maybe it's for our country, maybe it's for their family, maybe it's because that, that's their plan. But I, as these kids graduated and they're heading off, I want to send them off with a congratulations, thank you, and a pat on the back.
Thank you. Remember that July fourth meeting has been canceled. And our next meeting of the commission will be on the eighteenth of July. So enjoy your day off for those who are not going to be taking the extra time to go to Tampa, Florida before that meeting. So, yeah, bring your shorts. It's going to be hot and sweaty. So we do have a closed session today, so today's public participation. Any, any participation from the public will be held at this time. They will return to in the agenda. We're done with the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record, and you'll be limited to three minutes. Seeing nobody in the chambers and nobody on Zoom, then we will adjourn the regular meeting at one thirty-seven. Close session to follow.